It's at seven oh two. And the first order of business that we have is the meeting minutes from August twenty first. Has everyone read them?
Yes.
And can I have a motion?
Motion to accept.
Yeah, second.
All those in favor? Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
So it occurs to me that we are on television and I realize that it probably is appropriate for us to introduce ourselves to the television audience, so I will start. And my name is John Weiss, I'm the Chair of the Planning Board.
Kathleen Pearson.
John O'Connell.
Linda McCamick.
George Morris.
And David Powell from Orchard Street.
You should point out George is one of the members.
Oh yeah, George, yes, so you're not confused, we have, we have five members on the board and George Morris is an alternate member to the board. Also, our Town Planner is here, who is Martha Taylor. So our first order of business is appearance, what we call A and R, Angelo Chirdello. Chardielo?
Chardello.
Chardello. And so we appreciate your willingness to come, come forward on this evening and chat with us about what's going on out there. Also, here with us is the Conservation Agent for the city, Doug Packer, if, I'm sure you know Doug. So we wanna, and he's here for this, so we'd just like to have you come on up and sit, you can grab a chair and just do this.
Actually, he's gonna be at the microphone.
Oh, have to go to the microphone.
That's for the TV people to hear you.
Thank you. Okay. So, so really, why, why you're here, I think is that, the Town Planner and Doug has had, have had conversations with you and the Board members have kind of, on their own, come forward with questions about your progress. And so the purpose of this today is for you to let us know where you are in moving forward with the project that we approved, I think back, back in November, was it? It was November.
January, December.
Yeah. So with that, if you can just let us know where you are and then we will ask questions as, maybe after you finish, if you do want to do a short presentation of sorts, okay? Alright, thank you.
The last couple of weeks, we've cleared most of the trees off the site, the logs, I should say. And we got a driller that does the blasting scheduled within a couple of weeks to come in and start drilling, so we can blast.
You don't have drilling equipment on site yet, though?
No, he's, they're in, they're on a site in Saugus on Route One.
Okay.
As soon as they finish that site.
They're coming down here?
They're coming down here to start drilling. We didn't think there was gonna be that much ledge till we uncovered the ledge, obviously. We saw this a lot more than we expected.
Okay, so then let me open it up to any, any questions either the Board might have directly of Angelo and the progress that he's making.
Well, I, I've got one off the top, Doug has got a million, I'm sure. I'll skip the erosion control for the moment, but one concern is you've got wrap down over a major portion of the site. Now, the purpose of all of those groundwater infiltration things, the detention basin and so forth, was to, to deal with the runoff from the impervious surfaces, 'cause you will be paving it. Well, guess what, you paved it first and with, there are no best management practices in place at this point, which is not a good thing. Any caught thoughts, Doug?
On the wrap itself?
Well, that and the erosion, you got, we get, we, Concom has some erosion control issues, obviously.
Yeah, I, I don't wanna get too specific with the issues, I'd rather them come before the Concom, but we do have some issues that are not in compliance.
Yeah.
The wrap is one, and then he's starting to stockpile it out there. There are areas that were supposed to be left virgin, there is not a bit of virgin ground left on the site. His, his erosion control is, is poor at best in most spots. I've spoken to Angelo, we've talked about a week or so ago, and he's, he's responded since then, I'll be a little bit slowly, but he's responded since then. The non-compliance issue that bothers me the most at the moment is the wrap that showed up, because not only is it all over the site, there's a big pile of it out back, it's being stockpiled.
I think, if I might interrupt, we should explain what that is to most people.
Okay.
Wrap is a recycled asphalt product, so it's a ground asphalt that acts very much like asphalt when you put it back down.
Okay, thank you.
So basically, they've turned it from something that infiltrates, I mean, runs off maybe a third to something that runs off about ninety-eight percent, okay? With, with none of the methods to deal with the runoff in place.
So let, if I could, Doug, so are all of these issues really under your purview and you will deal with them at the Concom?
I think we have mixed jurisdiction, I think you have a site plan review.
Right.
That you've gone through here, you've written a permit for that, and then the Concom has its order of conditions.
Okay.
So yes, we, we both share some issues.
I have some questions regarding to the actual permit, but Martha, you wanna?
Uh, no, I was just gonna follow up on what Doug was saying. Our, among the materials that were submitted to us for site plan review included the erosion and sedimentation plan and the stormwater operation and maintenance plan, so the issues that have been brought up are, are basically not in compliance with those documents.
Okay.
This is our, this is our bag, as well as the Conservation Commission's. It's like Doug says, we both share responsibility, but neither one of us are advisory to the other, we both have the responsibility.
Kathleen, do you wanna?
Yeah, I just had a couple of questions, if I may. One, I think you understand why maybe some of us are concerned or upset with the way the progress has been. We were under the impression that you were gonna come in, you were gonna build a building, and it was gonna not only kind of enhance the Route One corridor, but also bring in some taxable revenue. So then over the past eight months, what's happened is, is you've come in and you've cleared, you've made what many people could describe, and it's been complained to me as an eyesore, were stumps, you know, where before we didn't see anything, and now we're seeing these stumps. So now we have an aesthetic issue, and then we had the issue of going against the permit. And so it's kind of a, this is where we're coming from, just so you know. Um, one of the concerns, questions I have for you that hasn't been answered tonight was, so I know that you're in the process of going ahead and blasting for construction, do you have an idea of when you might start construction?
Can I, can I start with the wrap?
Sure.
Sure.
Yeah, once you get as close to that as you can, if that's alright, so they hear you, okay?
Yeah, I, I think the wrap was gonna be temporarily, and I, I didn't know that we were supposed to put that, if that's the case, I, I will take it out. The only reason why I didn't think it was a problem, because when you went into, when we bought the land and when you go into sled road, there's all wrap there, and when you went into the tower before we bought it, it was all wrapped there already. So I didn't think it was a big deal to, you know, to put the wrap around it.
That's because those are roadways, isn't that true?
Yeah, the sled road is a road to start with.
Okay.
And that is a road, that's been paved, that section of sled road has been paved for generations, literally.
Yeah, even like the road as you went in towards like the tower?
No, that is new, and I don't think anyone asked us on that, did they? Or they, did they?
That had all wrap on it already, I know that.
That permit's quite old, I don't recall whether they had permission to do it or not, or the authority to do it, but that would be the difference in putting it down, and in this case here.
Yeah.
It's potent, potentially they put it down with authority, but I'd have to check into the documents, I'm honestly not sure.
Okay.
And, and the wrap is also mixed with gravel, it's not just straight wrap.
Sure, we understand.
It's mixed with gravel, we use it on jobs, but like I said, if, if you guys don't want it there, I, I was only putting it temporarily anyway, telling you we paid the parking lot.
The things that are somewhat concerning Angelo are the fact that you've got a big stockpile at the far end of the property.
Yeah.
And the fact that on some portions of the property, it is feet thick, it's not just a, a six inch lift in there, I mean, it is, it is probably three or four feet thick in some spots, so.
If you want, we could take some out, whatever, whatever, I have to do, I will do.
It's, from a compliance issue for the Conservation Commission, it really needs to be removed in entirety.
Okay, that, that's what we'll do.
Okay.
Yeah, I wouldn't disagree with that from our standpoint either.
Right.
I mean, I hate to push you through that, but, you know.
That's, that's what we'll do, that's what we're gonna do.
Yeah.
How about like now?
Wait, before we, so is the Board telling the applicant that we need to do this? I'm, I'm, I myself am a little confused, so if I'm confused, I want to understand.
Okay, Doug?
I'm, I'm not. I'm used to this.
Yes.
I'm not ordering him to do anything right at the moment, I'm, I'm asking for some compliance, and if he starts to remove it on his own, we'll let it happen. If not, then the Conservation Commission will have to take some action. We will more than likely discuss it on our upcoming meeting on the seventeenth.
Okay.
So perhaps what we're hearing is that we'll recommend a number of things after the end of this discussion, that you move forward on them, and that someone will go out, Doug will go out, Martha will go out, in a couple of weeks, we'll set a timeline, and if progress has been made, then progress has been made, but if it hasn't, then we would be seeking some redress.
And there may be some areas on the property that it would be perfectly fine to keep it there, and we can have that discussion, we can find out where he was authorized to put top down, and if he wanted to leave it there and come up with some sort of stormwater control in the meantime, great, we can be patient, we can work through these issues, you know, it doesn't have to be immediate, it doesn't have to be all of it, but it ought to be the areas that it should never have been down, it should come out right now.
Yeah, I, I think that's something that we can work out with Angelo.
It's, it's kinda out of order, part of the, my question, I guess, but going back from the beginning, after, you're answered, he's answered your question as far as that, right? So, right now, you're in the process, your permit, I believe, you have two years to start construction for this building, you know, we're eight, what, nine months into it right now, when do you plan on starting construction?
We were gonna, in two weeks, the drills.
The drill's coming, and then you're gonna move forward and go ahead?
Yeah, move forward, and we're gonna get the foundation in for spring, I know that.
Okay, so you're looking in the spring for the foundation? Okay.
So you're, you're not gonna be doing any construction of the building through the winter?
No, we're just gonna blast and get the site ready, I don't know, I could ask my father if he wants to, if we're gonna go ahead and put the foundation in those, I don't think he wants to do that in the wintertime.
No, I'm just, we're just trying to get an idea of what your plan is, so that we understand.
Our plan is to, what I know is right now, is the drills are gonna be coming in in two weeks, and we're gonna try to get the site ready for, like, bottom of footings, and if we run it too late to the year, we're not gonna pour the foundation till the spring.
I understand that, the weather.
If we do have time, we'll try to get the foundation in.
Alright, and as I said, I had another, a few questions. One of the other things that I personally, bothers me, is that you've been using sled road as part of your parking lot. That does have a house out back, it, no one lives there right now, but if there was a fire or somebody needed access that, that's somewhat obstructed right now, from the photos I saw. I just want you to be aware, that is a public road, and that's, that shouldn't be part of the parking lot right there.
We've always kept, I think Doug's been out there a couple of times, we've always left that open.
Alright, I'm just bringing it to your attention now, just so you're aware of that.
And, and one more thing, there's, a lot of people have been dumping trash down there, people have been going down there dumping trash, so, there was an officer who came out, I don't know who it was, we put a truck like on sled road, and he said, after you see like the machines are parked on one side and the truck is parked on another, but you can still get into sled, you know, down to sled road.
Right.
It was kinda, they didn't want the people driving right in there, so they told us to park there.
So I'm so glad we asked that question, so you answered it, 'cause we were trying to figure out why you were obstructing the road.
Well, that's, I mean, put it, I mean, it was, every weekend, we go back there and the people dump the trash, you know, and that's another thing I was gonna bring up, if somehow we can get a gate like fifty feet off the road, give everybody a key or whatever, I don't know how we stop people from bringing trash in.
That's more to health issues.
Yeah, that is a good point, though, if we could get a gate there and give the fire department the key.
I'm willing to put a gate on.
That's done, done regularly, I mean, Bruce Hill's pit was like that, you couldn't.
But that, that's a public road, I don't think that we have the authority to do that.
We, we don't, but somebody certainly does.
Yeah.
And there's, there's only one house there, and anybody that is going down that road does not necessarily have a reason to be down there, a legitimate reason.
Yeah.
If those folks still live there, it would be another matter.
If we could put a gate somehow, like going in, fifty feet going in, and somehow everybody have a key, because there's a lot of trash.
I think this is for the Board of Selectmen, I believe.
Yeah, I agree with you, I agree with you, but I think, I'm just following up on what is probably a pretty good suggestion.
We could make some inquiries, if, if there seems to be a willingness to do something like that, but if it was, it would have to be taken by the Board of Selectmen, but we could do that. We'll, we'll check that out.
We already took like three dumpster falls out of there, that people have dumped.
Wow.
It's, I mean, it's out of control.
Okay.
Not surprising.
Yeah, I just.
I mean, that, that, that property is a dump to start with, you know.
Yeah, yeah.
Okay.
Alright, one more question for you. Again, one of the things we're trying to do is beautify the area, so if you could just be conscious when you're stockpiling these stumps and everything, and, I mean, it has been brought not just to the Board, but to other people's attention of the way it looks.
Have you, I don't know if you guys have seen it lately.
It's better than it was.
Yeah, we most took everything out, we just got probably three tractor trailer loads left, and those will be coming out very soon.
Alright, thank you.
Just sort of a, maybe irrelevant question, how are you planning on blasting and what, where's the shot rock going?
With?
Is it, the shot rock, after you blast, is it, are you using it on site, or?
Yeah, some of it we're gonna use for the storm wall out front, that's, that, you know, on the plan, it shows.
The big stuff, yeah.
We're gonna use it for the storm wall, the small stuff could stay in the lower area, because we need a fill to act it, fill.
Okay.
Like the six inch pine is all covered. I, you know, we'll use it.
The small stuff, yeah.
Yeah, we'll use it underneath where we need the fill out front, and then the big stuff, we're gonna use it for the storm wall, that's really the front.
This side of the Board, have any questions, Linda?
Yeah.
David?
On the site currently, there are, or there appears to be, the wreckage of a building that wasn't there before, where did that come from?
Excuse me?
Well, there are, there's, there's a wooden building that was taken down somewhere else and brought to that site, yes?
No.
What, so what is that?
Those are, the, those are the forms that we brought in, the foundation forms, some were old, and we just put it in the stump, the tree pile that we're gonna truck out. Those were the old forms.
From?
Do we have a photo, excuse me, before we go, do we have photos of this?
Yeah, they're from the, you know, the foundation forms?
Yeah, I know, but they weren't on the site before.
Yeah, they came from our other yard next door, and we brought them to that yard, because we had to move out of the yard next door. And they were all old forms that rotted in the.
Right, so.
So you, excuse me, just for clarification, David, so you were going to use them for your forms here, but they're rotted, so you're not gonna use them?
No, we still have the forms, we got some good ones there, all the junk ones.
The junk ones you're gonna get rid of.
We're gonna get rid of, yes.
Could I see, have a picture?
Yeah, just eyeballing this, this pile of forms, it would look like that a good part of them you can't use, they're gone.
This is from?
Yeah, all the old ones, we got all back.
Yeah.
This isn't.
This is the one by the dumpster near the tower.
Angelo, would you look at this for me and confirm, is that what we're talking about?
No, not this, this right here.
Boy, that doesn't, I was, I was going along with David, it doesn't look like old forms to me.
If you really go in there and look at it, you'll see the form, you'll see they're all forms, they're all like two by fours.
Okay, so you're gonna, you're gonna go through this and you're gonna neatly put these forms off to the side, or you're just gonna get rid of all these?
No, they're gonna get rid of that.
Okay, good.
That's all the old stuff, the junk stuff, all the new forms are all stacked in the back.
Okay, so all the stuff that's in the front will go?
That's all gonna be trucked out next week, you're not gonna see that, actually, most of it's gone, a lot of it's gone now.
Alright, thanks.
So you're saying the junk should be out next week?
Yes.
Anything that is not?
Yes, it's all gone.
And that would include the large stumps and?
Everything, yeah.
Okay.
If you see, we probably took about seven loads out already, there's probably like, like I said, like four loads left.
So my question actually at this point is directed to Doug, 'cause he might know, and that is, do people still have to have a permit to bring in things like that from another site?
I would think so, yes, absolutely.
I mean, after we walked, we went through several years ago, just before we had our Board of Health move a site on Boston Road.
I'm taking him for his word.
Yeah.
If they were his used forms and he's dismantled them on site and then they're leaving, I, I find that to be a little bit different than bringing in construction debris, dumping it on the ground, recycling it, or, or doing whatever to it, burning it or whatever you plan to do with it, so, I, I take it on face, yeah, as long as the stuff's cleaned up and out of there, I guess I don't have an issue to make of it. If it's a re, if it's reoccurring and we find out that there is materials being trucked to site and then reloaded and trucked off-site, then we have an issue and so does the Board of Health.
Okay.
Yeah, that, we, we won't be taking any demo debris in or anything like that, those forms will be out, them's all old forms.
Well, you can understand.
Yeah, I do.
How they looked from the road, it looked as though you brought a building in there. Okay, my, another question I have is, if you look at the site.
Developing it now.
And so we'll get him the list based on this discussion, I'm sorry.
It's okay, if we look at the site plan, do we have a copy of that, Martha?
Yes, we do.
And maybe you could ask John O'Connell to look at that, because I'm concerned that I seem to see so many vehicles on that site, more than was provided for in your plan. Those vehicles, many of them are eighteen wheeler sized vehicles, and I noticed among other things that on one of the times I passed there, there were probably eight or nine dump trucks and similar kind of vehicles, and I don't remember the provisions on that plan for that kind of number of vehicles. Do you see enough room for that sort of stuff?
Is this a ten space?
We all, we all said that.
He's looking for number spaces.
Yeah, but these, these spaces are not big rig spaces, they're car veh, car spaces, pickup spaces. The big rig spaces are over on the eastern part of the, eastern side of the building, and I'm looking at maybe four, and everything else on that side appears to be a, you know, passenger vehicle pickup size, so I think there's no, no doubt there's probably more vehicles there, uh, big rigs there than were originally planned for. Personally, I don't have a problem with, with that in itself. The, the, the real bad thing I see is that we've got the stuff further to the east than was originally planned, I think. Would you agree with that?
I do agree with that, the only reason why that is, because there's ledge there, or you can't park on the ledge, we didn't know there was ledge there.
Oh, you can't park on the ledge, yeah.
Yeah, we gotta blast the ledge, and then, you know, when the ledge is blasted and we grade the area, then we can put the rock there.
I understand that.
But you're outside the footprint for, for removing it.
Yeah, it's, it's, it's a bit of a problem, because you're doing more than you originally were planning on doing, as evidenced by the drawing you gave us, and you've got stuff, you're all the way up to the silt fence, in fact, you're over the silt fence in some places or under it.
Do you mind if I?
Sure, no, by all means, come on, have a look. It appears to me like you're, you're pretty much up here in this range.
Yes.
You've, you've gone beyond the original driveway to the cell tower, and the, the downside that I see personally is we're compacting the heck out of the, the leaching field, and that I think would have to be corrected. I think you're probably gonna wanna scarify that particular area.
Okay.
Because, you know, compacting soil where you're gonna put a leaching field is kinda counterproductive.
Okay.
Uh, that.
I think, here are the truck spaces, am I correct?
Right, this, yeah, this, these guys look to be the same as these guys, these are definitely big rig, big rig spaces, you got one, two, maybe four of them, or were you intending these be all?
No, I guess these, no, the engineers had these all truck spaces, yeah.
Really?
Yeah.
Okay. Okay, 'cause you're, I'm looking at an eighteen foot aisle, these are thirties.
Yeah.
And that's appropriate for a truck, we're looking at an eighteen, that is your parking space size.
Okay.
John?
Yeah.
Isn't it more important not so much the size of the parking areas here, but actually the area that was designated for parking?
Oh, yeah. I was trying to answer a question.
Yeah.
That was a question that was asked, and my answer is yeah.
See, all, all in here is all the ledge.
Right.
Yeah, we didn't know there was ledge, it was gonna be there, so as soon as you.
But, but the point is, you're, you're only gonna have, according to the site plan, a limited area for parking, for, for, for these trucks.
Yeah.
And if you need to go substantially beyond that, that I think that we need to know about that.
Yeah, permanently, definitely, you know, it's a construction job now, and correct me if I'm wrong, I can't get excited about it, there being a few trucks more than there will be permanently, but if you need those spaces for permanent storage of the rigs in between activity, I think you really ought to tell us.
Okay.
Because we're not gonna be pleased by having them parked down here off the pavement area that, that you showed.
Right, right.
You kinda have to stick with the plan, that's why you do a plan.
Okay.
If anything, probably need a couple more spaces.
I'm sorry?
We probably gonna need a couple more spaces, two or three.
Well, again, that depends on the size of how much you need, and once you've got that figured out, you should let us know and let, submit that, submit that to Martha.
I would suggest that unless you do something heroic, I would not be parking, planning on parking on top of the leach field.
Okay.
That may not be a good idea.
Okay.
One of the concerns is, is that you go by the plan, so if we think that on the plan, it says that you're not gonna clear the trees, we don't expect you to clear the trees, and that seems to be what's happening, so that's the disconnect right now.
If we clear, if we clear trees, then we're supposed, that's not right?
I'm, I'm not sure.
If, if you're not, I, I, I'm pretty sure you have, because the, the tree line I'm seeing is, is well to the west, towards the road, from the erosion control, and I think you've got the erosion control about where it belongs, you know, maybe ten, fifteen feet? No, I'm sorry?
No, Angelo asked me a question, he says, we were gonna clear from erosion control out.
I mean, yeah.
Well, even at that, you set your erosion control, and then you have features on the You set up your erosion control, and then you have features on the plan, so you've got a gravel road that's gonna go, in your plan, you had a gravel road proposed to go around the cell tower, so you could have access. Well, that gravel road is more than just the gravel road as laid out in the plan, so most of us would surmise that you're gonna put a gravel road of whatever it's scaled out to be, twelve, fourteen, even if it was sixteen feet, around that area, the rest of it was gonna be left virgin, and you may do some storage there, as a matter of fact, I think you were gonna put some boulders there, and we were concerned that you may get too, too far outside your footprint there, you're a construction company, we, you know, you, you need room, you're growing all the time, and so we know that this creep happens, so, you, remember originally you were gonna put some boulders in there, I don't know, maybe ten or twelve feet apart, and we says, no, we want them closer than that, so that people realize they're not supposed to back through them and go into these areas that we didn't intend for you to impact, so it shows no impact on the plan, we expected no impact.
Yeah. Would it be appropriate to have a small group, at least Doug or myself from the Concom, and anybody else from the Planning Board that's interested, to go out there with Angelo to, to kinda work out what wrap needs to go and what wrap really isn't doing any harm for the time being, so we're not making him?
Well, what I, yes, I mean, I, I, what I was kind of headed towards was, at the Well, what I, yes, I mean, I, I, what I was kind of headed towards was, at the end of this session, that we would need to sit down and list the kinds of things that are, are our concerns.
Yeah.
Uh, as a board, and then Doug has his concerns as the Concom, and then if you and Doug and Martha perhaps go out and take a look at all this stuff, then the, the point is, we want Angelo to walk away in a couple of days with, oh, here's what I'm, here's the problems I've got, and I've got to address these. And that we then, that's our list.
Yeah.
Okay, so I think that, yes, the.
But we need Angelo with us, I think.
Yeah, I think that makes sense. Does, oh, excuse me, is that okay with everybody?
Yeah.
Okay.
I would like to add that.
Yeah.
Yeah.
I do have one more, at least one more thing.
Okay. Wait, wait, just, is that, do you wanna add anything else or?
It works for me, yeah.
I'm just, I'm just concerned, is the Conservation Commission gonna be upset that the two of you are having this conversation now at our meeting, and then going out with a?
I don't think so.
No, I, I don't think so. I mean, I started out saying, I started out by, by making the, the statement that, yeah, I, I don't wanna get too deep into it, and I've already got a little deeper than I intended.
Pretty mellow.
Do you understand what I'm saying?
Um, but we're gonna share these issues, I have no problem going out there with the applicant. Um, Angelo's, when I've called him, he's called me back within the day, so I don't have any problem working with the gentleman. Um, he'll come before the Conservation Commission, we'll have the same kind of discussion with the Conservation Commission. The site visit would be open to any of those members if they want to, and if Angelo wants the commission out there, I'd be glad to walk out there with him.
All right. All right, that's where we'll proceed. De- final issue coming from David.
Uh, yeah, which obviously does relate to the vehicles again. Um, that is a major highway with a speed limit of fifty-five miles an hour, and most people coming from the south are doing at least fifty-five, if not more. And it's far enough out of the traffic lights going south, going south for most people to have hit fifty-five. My point being that when I was here before the sort of rather scurrying activity of the last few days, the visibility coming out of there was close to zero. You know, you cannot either see pulling out of there or be seen. And I really think that because the original entry to sled road was never really used by many vehicles at all, most of them shouldn't have been down there in the first place. Um, and so I think that has to have some attention paid to it, and if requires some clearing along the right of way, then that has to be done, because.
Well, okay, well, when you two are out there looking at this issue, if, if you see and concur with what David's talking about, then you can have that discussion. But I, I, I'm just, I know that you have the rise and you're coming down at that point, I'm just not aware of the potential, 'cause these trucks are coming out slow. I mean, and so that, I don't know if that's an issue.
My only issue, my only caution about that is I think we need to be careful that we keep our authority to the applicant's property and we don't get.
Oh, yeah, there's no way that we're gonna ask.
This is a state highway.
We're not gonna ask.
The state highway's got a fairly wide right of way, and then the property next door comes right out to that, I believe, so we have to use caution.
No. I con- I concur, thanks. Okay, if that's, no, no other comments from?
Um, I have a few.
Okay.
Shoot.
That's okay. Um, uh, just one note, sort of following up on some of the other things we've been talking about, about stockpiled materials. There was a note in the stormwater operation and maintenance plan about not stockpiling any materials inside the hundred-foot buffer zone, um, which is a fair amount of a site, so I think that's another thing that we should be looking at when we go out there.
Okay.
Um, and another concern that I had was the work that's been done right along sled road. There's actually a stone wall that, that defined the boundary between the sled road right of way and your property, which appears to be completely gone. And sled road now, for all intents and purposes, appears to be part of, of your property and your project. And one of my questions was, um, what is your plan for restoring that, that stone wall and, and redelineating the boundary?
Where, where, the stone wall, as you draw it into sled road, going?
The one on your left?
On your left.
Was on your left.
You can't put that, if we're paving the road there, it was way too low.
Yeah, you got two entrances to the building that couldn't be restored.
Right, right, but, but this is a property line, and basically, under, under state law, I believe that you're not supposed to remove stone walls that delineate property lines.
So this is all removed?
So this is, this is, this is all removed along here.
Yeah, this is where the paving of the road is gonna go. This is the road.
We're talking about, so she's talking about these circles right here.
This, this line here, Angelo.
Yeah, but, yeah, this is like right now.
Yeah, this is the stone wall.
Yeah, that stone wall is probably.
Is gone.
Yeah, it's probably three, I think maybe more, four feet too low. This gets all filled.
Oh, that's filled to make up for, to drive the road, okay.
To, to make up the, right.
Yeah, yeah, okay, good point.
All right, okay.
Because this road came up like three feet.
Yeah.
To, you know, but it's, we're paving that road.
So you're winding it, you're winding, okay, gotcha.
Well, did Alan put property corners in for your stuff? Is this, this line?
Yeah, he's coming to mark out this next week, that, that's when it paved this road next week.
Okay.
I, I think the major thing is to ensure that, from the town's point of view, is that this is a, it looks like it's a public road. I understand it's your access, but that eventually the road is gonna someday, you know, continue. And so it can't look like it's just yours. Do you know what I?
I totally understand that.
Okay.
The only thing is, like I said, this, this wall.
I've got that, I always do that.
We're gonna be going in here.
I, I, I see.
And this didn't go all the way down, it kinda really stopped right about here somewhere. But it, but the wall was like, I'm telling you, it was like three feet too low.
Yeah, I can understand that, yeah. That should show up on the grading plan.
Yeah, you'll, you'll see it on the grading.
Yeah, okay. Well, you say you're gonna be paving that in the near future?
Yeah, um.
Does Tim know this?
I, I, I know Hancock was gonna get a hold of DPW, and basically we're gonna mark out the road, and we were gonna pave it, so we used the bar.
Tim Leonard?
Okay.
This is eighteen, and that's fifteen and some change. Yeah, you got a significant amount of fill there.
Right, I guess the issue is that it wasn't shown as being removed, there was no notation of that, so.
No, that, that, there wasn't, yeah.
If, if they want something back in between there, we can always put something back. Like, you're not gonna have it in the roadway going in, you know that.
Oh, of course not, no.
I don't mind, you know, put something in the middle of the, you know, that island there, if you guys want something there.
Maybe, I, I don't, I don't know. I leave it up to you guys to figure out.
I would, I would, uh, put, hold that one in abeyance.
Yeah.
Far more serious problems with the site than that, at this point.
Like I said, if we go out there, walk the site, and it's something that you guys see that we need to put back, I have no problem doing it.
Okay. Martha? That's it? Anything else from the board? Well, with that, uh, thanks so much for coming by. Uh, we will set this up.
You guys are gonna talk about when we go out.
Yeah, well, I think that what we, what we're gonna do is that Martha's gonna start working on a list. We don't have it right now, of things that the board is concerned with, and then John and Doug are gonna go out with that list, and we'll have that in a day or two, and then they'll call you and you'll see it, maybe Thursday or Friday or next week.
You're, you're gonna talk to them.
These are all items that we talked, discussed tonight.
Just to think, all the things, so that, 'cause we talked about so many things.
Yeah, it would be nice we meet on the site like we talked about.
And, and we'll have the list of things, so that you can see what they are and you can take them with you. Okay?
Thank you for coming tonight.
Thank you very much for coming.
Thanks, Angelo.
Thanks, Angelo.
Thank you.
Um, one of the things on that is, is, do you think that who needs to be contacted about the trash that's being dumped down there? Just so that they're aware of it? Is the town aware that they're dumping trash down there? That's, so we probably need to tell someone, don't we?
Heavy, huh? If anybody? Yeah.
Okay, so Martha, do you, oh, Chia Chia, you're the chair.
No, ask her, it's all right.
Martha, do you think that you can send an email to the, to Porta Health and to the police, just to acknowledge the fact that we heard this?
Sure.
Okay, thank you. Thank you.
Thanks, Angelo.
And just another, uh, just another note I have here on the, on this, on a gate. Do you wanna just have a quick discussion with Tracy about that, whether she might be open to that and?
The gate, you mean?
Yeah, the gate.
Yeah.
It's, 'cause it's related to that issue, and see if that's something that the, that the town might have an interest in it.
Well, subsequent to that, wouldn't you wanna talk to the selectman at the next meeting?
Yeah, but let's see what.
That clearly has to happen.
Yes, absolutely, but let's, let's get Tracy's take on it, then we'll go to them and talk to the selectman.
Yeah, 'cause, uh, the police department and the fire department both have, have an aura in that water.
Yeah.
So, um.
The gate forest street, if I remember, when they closed it, uh, you know, out into West Newbury.
Well, they finally did, and not, I think they did. I think they had to, they had such a problem down there with trash.
Right. Yeah.
That they finally gated it.
Has that house of theirs been, I know they were moved out, but has that house been condemned, or is, is there a process going on?
There's no occupancy there, to my best of my knowledge, but I don't, I don't know what stage that.
Right. Do they? I'm wondering, has anybody pulled an occup- did Sam pull an occupancy permit, or?
Um, the, the structure does not have the basic, um, utilities.
So it's not occupiable, okay. So we're not blocking off something that belongs to somebody else that could be rented out and lived in?
No, you, I wouldn't think it would be rented out and lived in, but they do have a number, they, they still have a lot of material things there.
Oh, of course, yes.
Yeah, they still need access to the site.
Oh, yeah, but that, uh, I don't think a gate is mutually exclusive, that doesn't prevent them.
Oh, no, it doesn't.
That could be worked out easy enough.
I would think so.
Yeah.
Okay. Um, we're still getting used to being televised, because that's a conversation that one, one side of it wasn't heard on.
Yeah, it wasn't, yeah.
Well, yeah, I think we actually are gonna need to address that, because quite clearly, for the kinds of things we do, to have Paul and Doug marching up and down here like a, you know, whatever, and also at the points that we look at stuff, I'm sure to any viewer, it's going to be relatively meaningless. So I think I would like to propose, and I have sort of been nudging at this for some time, that we think about how we use the television in relation to what we do and how we best present what we do. Because it's, this isn't, in my estimation, a, a good way to do it.
Well, um, you, you are probably right on that, but it also forces a little bit maybe formality, and, um, and maybe that's not a bad thing either.
Oh, yeah.
But the other thing is that can we have, um, you know, a, uh, something that sits over there where Doug's face can be picked up by that camera here, and he can sit at the desk with us and look at all this stuff, I mean.
Well, the microphone is movable, so.
So I think, I think that, I think that keeping the microphone there is problematic.
You could have another microphone.
Yeah, we need another microphone perhaps. So we'll talk to Caleb.
We'll talk to Caleb about that.
Talk to Caleb about it. All right? Okay, thanks. Um, so, we're gonna move on, old business.
Can Doug go now, is he all set?
Oh, Doug is all set.
Yes.
Thank you, Doug.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Appreciate it.
Thank you.
Appreciate it very much. On proposed zoning amendments for the fall town meeting, preparation for public hearing, medical marijuana moratorium, and corrections to the site plan review, provisions of the solar bylaw, Martha, you have some information for us?
Uh, yes, I actually had a bunch of stuff. There are photographs, if anybody wants to, to look at them, they were from two, two and a half weeks ago and today. Now, I know David sent, sent along a, um, an ordinance or a moratorium from Weymouth, which I think was passed at their annual town meeting.
I don't know that it actually got passed, because it was, I think, destined for the fall, and I don't, I don't think it had it yet.
I forgot to check it.
But it, it was drafted and okayed by their town council.
Well, the important thing is to have it okayed by the attorney general, because they've been very specific about some of their comments.
Right, well, it struck me frankly, why I went looking for it, is that, um, the Burlington version that was being, um, the sort of, what, traded around as, as the one that got passed. I was recently informed by somebody whose opinion I respect, that a decent attorney could drive a truck through it.
Through our draft, or through?
No, the, the, the piece that we got, which is on the attorney general's site.
The model that we used.
Oh, I see.
So I went looking for something else, and actually, the, the Weymouth thing is, is taking exactly the same tack, except it reads better and there are no holes in it. Which is why I suggested that we might sort of consider it, because the Burlington one frankly is, is just so bad, that the very fact that the AG has passed it should not influence us in any sense.
Well, having gone through every decision that they've rendered so far, this has been the model for a lot of them, and they have passed it. But I'm gonna pass, George had some comments, so this is the one that we had drafted based on the Burlington model. Um, and there were some comments from George which are in red on that.
Yeah, so I think let's take a look at this, and then if we have comments on this document, uh, let's talk about this document first, okay?
Actually, I need a copy of that file there.
Yeah, Martha, you can take this one.
The date on mine, eight oh one?
You go.
Oh, okay, this is.
Jasmine, you want one?
And then I also, um, there was one from Hingham, which had some language in it that I thought might be useful as well, particularly regarding hardship cultivation.
So, if I remember correctly, the initial major issue that David had brought up when we first started looking at this was referencing, when it talked about medical marijuana treatment centers and registered marijuana dispensaries and other uses.
Related to the regulation of.
What's in paragraph thirty-eight, thirty-nine, and forty, the first paragraph?
So I've got it in, I have it, US thirty-three, line thirty-three?
Thirty-eight, thirty-nine.
Forty, line forty is the other uses related to the regulation of medical mari- marijuana. That phrase does not make sense. And I, I, and I would go to mine.
And the town needs to time set it, consider the regulation of such use and address such novel, complex issues.
I think I know what they're trying to say, but they're not saying it. Which is the problem, which actually, maybe you can understand it better if I extend it into the third paragraph, the temporary moratorium, okay? Look at the temporary moratorium. It says, um, line sixteen, during the moratorium period, the town shall undertake the planning process to address the potential impacts of medical, medical marijuana in the town. That's not what we're doing.
No, that's true.
Have absolutely no competence to address the.
No, 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 and, and I understand that, and I think that that needs to be changed, but, and so let's go back to, um, where is it again? Thirty-nine and forty?
Mm-hmm. Well, why, why I made the link, John, is because what we get to do is to regulate uses of land, of property, right?
Right, right.
And so somehow, that's gotta find its way in here.
And, and I think, you know, that this, this language here implies that it's, um, something other than a facility or other than a land use. And so if we could insert in thirty-nine or forty, um, marijuana dispensaries and other facilities and land uses, I become very comfortable with that.
Mm-hmm.
Okay.
I would be much more comfortable.
That's fine.
Yeah? Uh, other, other facilities and land uses. And then, then going directly to where you were concerned on, during the moratorium period, the town shall undertake a planning process to address the potential impacts of.
And I think what you just insert there is the use of land, structures, or premises.
Right.
For the cultivation, preparation, and sale.
And, and those impacts, those uses could have on the town.
Mm-hmm.
Are we straying into something Dave was trying to avoid with that language?
I don't know what you're saying.
So, when we say impacts on the town, in a broad sense, we've got medical impacts, we've got social impacts, et cetera, et cetera. Uh, as opposed to the land use, which.
Well, yeah, I, I, you might be right, John.
I don't know.
And I, uh, but tying this to, again, to the land use into the facility.
Well, let, let me try that phrase again that I put in here.
Where, where is your?
Okay, I, I, well, I, okay, it's in the version I sent to Martha, um, which are where I took the temporary moratorium language, and I simply inserted after potential, uh, impacts, okay? I inserted of the use of land, comma, structures, or premises for the cultivation, comma, preparation, and sale of medical marijuana in the town.
Perfect.
I'm, I'm fine with that, I think that's very good.
Perfect.
The potential impacts might refer to having placement of these facilities near schools, churches, playyards, things like that.
Yeah. You're straying into sociology there.
Yes.
Yeah.
Can I?
Which is not our purview.
Now, just, let's get this one down first, so that we all agree with that.
Yeah, it's in the version that Martha just gave you underlined.
I see it.
Hingham had some language which clarifies that even a little bit further, if I may read that.
Yeah, I didn't get to that one there.
And I'll pass it, pass it out, it's, um. It's the highlighted language, um, the second highlight, and shall provide the opportunity to study their potential impacts on adjacent uses and on general public health, safety, and welfare, which is what comes into special permit language, and to develop zoning and other applicable regulations that appropriately address these considerations, consistent with statewide regulations and permitting procedures.
Yeah, that's good.
It's, it's along the same lines as, as what David was suggesting.
That's nice language.
Clear.
Right, yeah.
Bye, Angel.
Well, that's tying it to the zoning and the police power, which I think is nice, and that's, that's, that's from which we are able to zone. So that is interesting. Now, I guess I have a question of, mostly George. So, the language we have, um, and Martha, what language has been sent to the press?
Um, what is available for viewing by the public is, is what was sent to the selectman.
Which is essentially this.
Which is, George is without the redlined additions.
So it's, so it's this?
So it's essentially that.
So, a, a question I have is, we open up the public hearing, there were folks there, and we make changes. My concern was that they, and I think that these changes we've talked about are.
Are more significant.
Are, are significant, and ought to be made, and I think we can all justify that. So how far can we go, and then, so that we're not confusing to the people in the audience or who are on television, saying, well, what are they doing now? So how far can we go and then, so that we're not confusing to the people in the audience or who are on television saying, well, what are they doing now? And why are they making these changes? So my question to you is, you know, how far do you think we're, we're able to go on something like this?
Martha might suggest that you're talking about only incidental changes between what was given to the selectmen and what we finally come up with. These other suggestions that we've had tonight really make quite a change to it.
It's not for clarification, for the same intent?
You could say that.
Well, I think it, I think it is for clarification.
Because it's taking uses and saying, what does that mean?
Right.
In the past, if it's been for the same intent but just for, for clarifications, it hasn't been an issue.
Right, and I think, I think that the, the intent still here, the major intent is to put a moratorium in place through June thirtieth, twenty fourteen, that's not being changed.
Right. A- and, and the moratorium language, I guess then my second thing is, is the moratorium language, in terms of the critical language, obviously the bylaw is the critical language.
Mm-hmm.
And how critical is the, is this language on requesting a moratorium relative to that and do they have to match?
Relative to the bylaw? I wouldn't think they have to match.
No, I don't, I don't think they have to match either.
You haven't come up with a bylaw?
Because we don't know what it is.
We don't know what it is. And basically what this is saying is that we would like, the town would like some time to figure out what that bylaw is.
Okay.
Yep.
George, do you think this is, this, these changes that are, that are showing up and that we talked about tonight, do you think they are big deals?
They are clarifying.
Yeah.
They are not making any significant impact in terms of the intent.
Okay.
Uh, I think it's more clear to the public and to the town meeting when they consider it.
Yeah.
And that's a very big step.
So in other words, it's a good thing.
Make sure and it does pass, that they understand it.
See, my perspective in this was that I, as I went through this, I was starting to wordsmith and then I caught myself. And, um, and I became a little concerned when I saw all this stuff coming in, I said, eh. But going through what we just went through, I think those are good things to change and I think that we can defend them. So do we wanna have further discussion of this or do we wanna put this to bed?
Well, I guess the question is, do, does the board want to agree on changes which I can then draft and that would be presented as part of the discussion at the public hearing?
Well, I would, I would concur that the changes that we just made were to in, include.
Well, we kind of made two. One was from, from David's and then looking at, at Hingham's.
Right, one was from David's and then incorporate from the Hingham one, which brings forward the issue of the public, um, welfare.
Health, safety, and welfare.
Is, is a very sound way to make this kind of argument.
I think the other important thing from, um, from the Hingham one and which has been brought up in a lot of the attorney general's decisions is number four, the exclusion of accessory uses, um, which includes this caveat that it does not prohibit hardship cultivation because that's against the law that was, was passed.
So would you, would you explain that for me?
So if somebody, um, if somebody can't make it to a registered marijuana dispensary, they can be permitted, if they're qualified, to cultivate a certain number of, of plants on their own property.
On their own property.
And that's hardship cultivation.
And, and, and zoning can't preclude that.
Cannot prohibit, cannot prohibit that.
It's not a big amount though, it's maybe like six plants.
Right, it's, it's a very, it's a small amount.
How do you?
Go on.
Okay.
Have you done some research?
How does this?
The main.
Oh, exclusion of accessory uses, so this doesn't in any way speak to somebody who might actually want to do nothing but raise cannabis?
Right, if they, if they wanted to, I suppose, do it as a accessory use of their property.
Well, I mean, the original proposal that was sort of floated to the selectmen was one that was coupled to a potential production site in Georgetown, right?
Right.
So that's what I'm saying, it, this, the accessory use issue doesn't in any way, because it can't, it can't hobble the fact that your primary activity is cultivation.
Correct.
What they're trying to do here is basically saying that a dispensary can't have a little greenhouse in the back where they raise their own whatever.
Well, they can if it's part of the primary use, but, you know, somebody
Right.
Yeah. Right.
couldn't do it in a little greenhouse in their yard unless they were doing it for their own use.
Right.
Right.
Yeah, okay.
As a qualifying.
Because I think that's the question we're gonna get.
Well, how, how is that covered then?
Sort of a marijuana farm? I, I don't think it's allowed, they have to have.
You need to add language here to that effect.
Life is part of a dispensary.
Yeah, I think.
Yeah.
Because if, if there's a dispensary approved, clearly that dispensary has to have a source of supply, which presumably could be a new breed.
Sure.
So it is a separate law as it probably is.
But my concern is that, do we have to be concerned about this now or is that just something we make sure that we cover in the bylaw?
Well, we make sure that we cover it in the bylaw, but if, um, I, I guess the, the question is if, if you wanna make sure in the moratorium that you're not only prohibiting dispensaries during this moratorium period, but also growing, um, cultivation.
And related uses.
And related uses, you can do all of that, you just can't prohibit the hardship cultivation.
Well, that's fine. So that's what we'll say during the moratorium period, okay?
So I would suggest adding a paragraph along the lines of the exclusion of accessory uses.
Okay. All right, um, I think we can move forward on this, um, but we need a motion to accept the changes that we've discussed relative to the first page of, um, amending the discussion of uses to include facilities and land and amending the second pla- page in temporary moratorium to include David's language as amended by the Hingham language. And then thirdly, to add language in he- in here that talks about the cultivation of individuals on their own property. So could we, can I get a motion, motion to amend it, so moved? Second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you.
Now, we can't put a moratorium on this, the hardship, right?
Right.
Right.
Okay, corrections to site plan review provisions in the solar bylaw.
Okay, just one thing on that, shall I then draft up my understanding and I'll send that out?
Yes, yes, yes. Yes, and then, um, I think that in preparation for the public hearing, we ought to have some kind of just a quick, David, if you, is Da- do we rely on David to bring his projector in for a public hearing?
Uh, we do have one here at town hall, but.
We do?
You can, I can, I can bring it, it's always frankly, if we're gonna do a public hearing, it's not a bad idea to have two because occasionally.
Yeah, I, I just think that we ought to think about, not a lot of slides, but, you know, just some language up there that talks about the primary purpose of what we're after so that the audience and the television audience can see what we're after because it can get a little complicated. So I think that maybe next week or the, early the week after, Martha, you and I can sit down and try to figure that out.
Okay, for the, uh, for the medical marijuana, again, I'd, I'd refer to the end of the Hingham one, they had some commentary about the purpose of it, which seemed to be fairly, so we might be able to use that as a basis for what.
Good. Those folks in Hingham, you know?
And I also, just as an aside, I have the draft of Georgetown's bylaw, which they actually, they're having their public hearing on the eighteenth, the same night as we're doing ours. Yeah, they had a posting issue with.
But, but that's in fact, in fact, the bylaw.
That's the bylaw, so.
That's not a moratorium.
Right.
So it'll be very interesting to see what they've come up with.
Right, so they're, they're, they're doing it as an overlay district.
Good.
So.
Okay.
Keep you posted on that.
Okay, the solar bylaw, yeah, I know you've got new information on that.
Um, solar bylaw, I think, I, I don't think we have any, any changes to what we're proposing.
No, but you've got some letters.
We do have some information on that, yes. There were two opposition letters that were sent to the attorney general regarding our bylaw, uh.
The one that was passed in the spring?
Yes. Um, essentially saying that it was, uh, what, uh, what the town was proposing in the bylaw was, uh, essentially not, not legal, um.
Which, there.
That it was, that it was, that it was sort of the, the criteria were arbitrary and discretionary, um, and, uh.
That we had, um.
We had sort of overreached.
Overreached in terms of looking at things of aesthetics and whereas, uh, other parts of our bylaw don't really deal with aesthetics as much as this one does, but, um, so Jenny has given a quick response?
Yeah, she, she gave what I thought was a, a good response and she, um, the other thing that they were arguing was that it's something that really can't, should not be regulated by special permit based on chapter forty-eight, section three of mass general law, the exceptions.
So this was not feedback or, um, comment from the attorney general, this was the letter that went from.
Right, two letters.
These are two letters from two attorneys that went to the attorney general's office.
Okay.
And those were forwarded to our town council for comment and she did write a reply, basically referring to the state model which has very much the same criteria that we have.
Right, and others, and other towns.
And, and other, and other bylaws which the attorney general's office had, had passed.
Right.
So, uh, this went back to the AG's office yesterday and, um, so we'll see how it, how it all shakes out.
Was it specif- was it specific to scenic byway or anything like that or no?
It was, yeah, scenic views and.
Scenic views.
Are, are we still awaiting the decision of the attorney general now?
And historic. Yes. Yes.
And do we know who or what interests these attorneys represent?
I, I don't think we know for sure. I don't, I don't know for sure.
I, I, okay, in other words, they didn't.
But perhaps you could guess.
Yes, I probably could, but I'm just saying, they, they didn't declare themselves as representing anyone other than themselves.
Uh, I think one of them may have, the other one did not.
Yeah, I didn't see.
So what is the one who did, because it's public information?
Yeah, I don't.
I think it was the Pykes, they mentioned Pyke.
Okay. I, I didn't read that one, so I, I saw the other one.
Um, since we're on the same topic, um, when the bylaws are passed in the spring or changes are accepted by the town, do they go into effect immediately? Or do we have to wait till we get approval? I was always under impression it goes into effect immediately.
They go into effect as soon as they're adopted at, at town meeting.
Right.
If the attorney general chooses or, you know, feels that they're not, you know, consistent with the law or something, then, you know, whatever may have been done in that time is avoided essentially.
So, that was back in the spring, here we are in the fall. Do we right now, are they, these changes posted online on the website so that if somebody went to pull down our current bylaws, they're posted there or are they looking at the one, the bylaw from previous to spring meeting?
Um.
Do you understand my question?
Yes, I don't, yeah.
They, um, they're not on the bylo- uh, they're not on the website as part of our bylaw. If they were to go back and look at last spring's warrant, they'd find it there.
But how does the average person know that? Because this gets back into the situation where we had last, actually with the solar, um, we came up during the public hearing for the, um, Pyke property where they were accessing the bylaws online. This was actually an issue with the clerk's office versus the planning board's webs, um, when you click on the different, um, boards. But my concern is right now that people are ac- accessing the incorrect bylaw information.
And I think the, the policy has generally not been to update the bylaw until we actually do get the attorney general's.
But the problem with that is, is that you have over six months, well, is that six months?
Well, it's supposed to be ninety days, we have thirty days in which to submit it to the, the attorney general's office
Three months, okay.
and they have ninety days to respond unless they request an extension, which they have done in the past. They did last year for the OSRD changes.
So nobody else sees this as an issue but me, I see that as a big problem, that if, if we have changes to our bylaw that are effecting, these are what we're telling you, this is our bylaw for the town, these are the rules you have to follow, they don't have access to that information. So how, how, how can that be?
That, were I an applicant, I would find that extremely annoying. I'm not sure how we fix it, maybe put it on the website with the deno- denotation that this part has yet to be approved by the attorney general.
Well, can't they come into town hall and get the correct information?
Yeah.
They can come into town hall and get the correct information.
They don't know that it's been changed though, when they pull up the bylaw, there's nothing indicating that it's been changed.
But they shouldn't, they shouldn't, they should come into town hall and find out.
They should.
They shouldn't just go to a website to get it.
No, that's absolutely correct, but what, what are they going to do regardless of the shoulda, coulda, woulda?
I think there is a disclaimer on there, um, I believe, saying that this is not the, you know, so if you really want the most up to date.
Yeah. Go, go talk to.
There is, okay.
Yeah, that may be enough in itself, really.
I think it is.
Now, by the way, do we have any inclination that people are sniffing around for other projects?
No.
Solar?
Well, solar.
Oh, yeah.
Solar.
There has been, although I haven't heard anything recently.
That's right, I mean, I've heard things, but nothing, nothing hot.
I had heard that there.
Nothing formal, right.
And Kathleen's concern in this case, I think, is we didn't have a solar bylaw until we passed it in the spring, right?
Right.
Correct.
So, right now, anything that may be on the website is what our bylaw is. Until such time as we change any things within it for technical or other reasons.
I'm going on record saying that I don't like it, I know everybody else does, but I, I'm not comfortable with that.
Well, no, but wait a minute, what is it, what I'm trying to say is that, um, small changes are most of the changes that happen to existing bylaws. And those changes probably can't be or don't tend to be very rapidly translated to the website, whereas a whole new bylaw like the solar, there's no problem.
So, so, so let, let's, let's do a practical application. If, if I am interested in solar and I go to our bylaw online, I find nothing.
That's correct.
Right, yeah.
So it's not a problem. And if I'm interested in, I come and I talk to Martha or Doug and they say, oh, we have a new bylaw that was just passed and here it is.
You're assuming that I'm just, I'm not just thinking of just an applicant, I'm thinking about a Butters and people in town that are interested in understanding our bylaw that are not familiar with it. So they're not gonna come to town and hall, most people are intimidated coming down and asking about information if they're not an applicant.
No, no, you've got a point, but that, that's a valid point, but.
But, um, I don't expect it to be rectified tonight, I'm just pointing out that I do have an issue with this, I've always had an issue with it the way it works.
Maybe the, the warning needs to be beefed up in some fashion.
Well, Martha, each, each year we have changes that we make to the bylaw or we have since I've been here.
Right.
And, um, have they ever overturned and made substantial changes to the document?
Not since I've been here.
You stayed?
There, um, there was one instance, I think, where there, there was an issue with, um, the time period between the public hearing and the town meeting, so it got kicked out for procedural reasons and had to go through again, but it wasn't a substantive issue.
I mean, I, I, you know, I, I'll, I'll support Kathleen on this, I see no reason why we can't have a runoff copies of the solar bylaw and have at the bottom have not yet been approved by the attorney general, but this is what was passed at town meeting.
And the top.
And ha- and have it set, don't incorporate it yet into the zoning code, but just have it as a separate document, have twenty of them.
Well, there should be hard.
And then, and then put it online.
Yeah, and there should be hard copies that go out to people as kind of inserts in our zoning.
No reason why, I mean, recently passed legislation, zoning bylaw.
Mm-hmm, yeah. Yeah.
Well, let me talk to, um, Susan and Tracy about it, because Susan's the, Susan's the one who's our webmaster.
Does, Susan does the website? Yeah.
And, um.
No, I, I can do that, that would make sense. Okay, anything else on these two, except for that we'll have a public meeting in two weeks? Public hearing, excuse me. Okay, existing site plan review bylaw. All right, I said I was gonna come up with a list of stuff and then we'll work off of that. So let me hand this out to you and now, again, what I meant was that this is a starting point and then we can go from here and you can agree with some of these or not agree with some of these, you can, um, add on to them, you can, then we'll go through each person to see if there are multiple, um, issues that are on mine as well as others. And then, at the end of the night, hopefully we have a document that has a list of things that we think ought to be done and then we're gonna have a subcommittee get together and work on it and come up with a new document. That's pretty much what we said last time, is that okay with everybody?
Yep.
Mm-hmm. Okay, so I, what I did here was I, I was using my zoning code and, I mean, I've talked about this from the beginning, that in section A two of the code of the site plan review, which talks about applicability, which is the, the second paragraph, I think what needs to be added after any, what the statement is, any non-agricultural or, non-residential or non-agricultural use, and I want. non-residential or non-agricultural use, and I wanted to add mixed use or multifamily residential of four units or more. Because we didn't have these, um, we didn't have the multifamily when you wrote this, David, initially, I don't think.
That's true.
And so, and the mixed uses is something that we want to encourage, so that.
Oh, sorry, go ahead.
What?
Go ahead, finish.
No, and then, um, and then the mixed uses, and then, um, so that we would just, you know, adjust the, that portion accordingly.
I understand the multifamily, but could you explain the mixed uses?
Well, right now, um, it says industrial, commercial, and the like, but there's no residential. But you could have, whether it, um, on Route One, or you could have an, um, Byfield Village or, um, someplace on one A, somebody who wants to build a mixed-use property that has residences on the second floor. And that would be a mixed use, and so therefore it ought to be, can, ought to go under site plan review.
But wouldn't the use in the bottom trigger it automatically?
Well, I guess it depends on the size. Right now we're saying it's twenty-five hundred square feet, maybe that's enough to pick up everything.
Well, is it, that, it's gonna be mixed used for that, that learning center that wants to.
That's, that's clearly a mixed use.
Yeah.
And it's falling in because of its size.
I'm trying to figure out, if it's not residential, it's already gonna trigger it, right?
But mixed use has, potentially has a residential component, so I think that's.
Well, here's another thing. The, the other side of this could be that it's a mixed use with most of it residential and only a thousand square feet of commercial.
Okay, that's it. Thank you.
Okay. Then in the next one, which is procedures, which is the bottom of the page, A three. So this is something, I looked at all the other doc, you know, towns near us and others, and this is what I'm putting forward. Reduce the total review time from, right now it's a hundred and fifty-five days, which is five months, basically, to a hundred and five days, and hold the public hearing within forty-five days and not the sixty days that's in the document, and vote on a decision within sixty days and not ninety days. We've never discussed this, so I thought, let's talk about it if people agree or not agree.
So that's forty and fifteen and thirty? So you said eighty-five days?
Four, no, so forty-five days and sixty, right? Forty-five. Forty-five day, hold the public hearing forty-five days, and then, and then sixty for the, for the review.
Forty-five days. Yeah, I'm adding forty-five to forty-five.
And, and, um, there were, you know, the one that we got from Quincy was ninety days, uh, Newburyport's ninety days, Amesbury's, that, um, some of the smaller towns are longer, like West Newbury. Uh, but Georgetown was, was, I think, a hundred and ten day, I forget what, what they were. And I just think that, you know, if we are gonna make some changes to this, we ought to also make it streamlined a little bit more.
Well, Salisbury has thirty and sixty.
Yeah.
I think thirty's.
And even on smaller ones, thirty and forty-five.
I think thirty's not enough just because of the posting time.
Yeah, and that's what I thought about, that's why I went to forty-five.
I think that's better.
Does, does this come back to whether or not we wanna have a tier review process? Because for small, for smaller projects, I see this being really good, but what if we had a large project come in? Would this, would we be able to have an engineer review some of the documents in that timeframe?
Forty-five days? I would think so, and this doesn't limit the amount of time that the public hearing itself can, can go on, that could be continued, basically indefinitely.
Extend.
Can always continue it, right.
As an example, do we have a, a fee proposal back from Joe?
We do.
We do, so that took, uh, two weeks, 'cause we just got it last week. So there's fifteen days, and we have a proposal, I would think he could turn out a review in another two weeks.
No, I'm thinking of something like if a Little River came back, okay, if something that scale came back.
Little River kinda thing?
But that would fall under something entirely differently.
That would be.
So that would be extended or whatever it would be.
That would be under special permit and.
I would think we would negotiate our way out of that, somebody like that is gonna understand. That they, it's gonna take a long time.
Okay.
If we get the big hunga gila like that, it'll be taken care of by a special way that we adjust the zoning ordinance. So anyway, so that's for your consideration. And then, A three D, A three D, three D, three D. Oh, this is just clarification, and, and, and when we talk about final action, we, we just referenced the, I've always had a problem with this, this is in, in the code, it says in con- uh, conformance with the criteria and conditions of approval contained in ninety-seven nine A four and ninety-seven nine A six, and I just wanna say, well, what is that? And it's simply the design criteria contained in ninety-seven nine A four and the.
Just defining it.
Just define it, so I, it's not, that's a clarification, it's not, I, I think that we probably won't do it. The next one is something that, um, I picked up in nearly every one of the docs that we got, and that is in, in the decision criteria, expanded that the proposed building scale, which is what they have, design and character is consistent with the, with the surrounding neighborhood, we only have character in there now, but I think even Ipswich alludes to design, which is the most conservative of all the documents. And I, I know, David, you've indicated you thought we might get some pushback on this, but I, I've always believed this is one worth pushing for.
Mm-hmm, no, I, I agree.
John, what is your sense on it?
I, I would agree with your comment, that we've got things like the environmental features of the site and surrounding areas are protected, but that really doesn't speak to architectural treasures or colonial buil- era buildings or, you know.
Okay.
I can think of some horrible things could be built right next to the Doyle House, for example.
Yeah.
You know?
Oh, boy.
Your boy is right.
On this thing of the perform, I was, David, you did a remarkable job of this performance guarantee. It is the strongest performance guarantee of any document that I looked at.
Thank you, um, I, I think I, I stole it from, I'm sure.
Well, I don't know where you stole it from, but I didn't see anything that was as strong as this, and I think it's excellent.
You're talking six?
Yeah, uh, uh.
Yeah.
Yeah, this, no, uh, five, performance guarantee, uh, eight, eight, eight point six.
Yeah, I have an issue with one sentence there. It's at the very end of the page, last two lines, the amount of security shall include a fifteen percent contingency, and shall be determined based on an estimate from the applicant's engineer, who in my humble opinion is probably one of the least qualified of all the people that could do an estimate. Uh, first of all, the applicant's engineer is a site guy, and I would not consider him a, a construction cost estimator, probably. Secondly, if he's working for the developer, uh, that may not be the best guy to be producing a figure. Let me suggest that we take some of the applicant's money and just hire a construction cost estimator, professional cost estimator.
So, I, I, I think I concur with that.
Yeah.
What I'm suggesting as the last paragraph, and I don't know where you fit this, in this section, is this, read on the bottom of five, and I'll read along with you, in performance guarantee, at the end of, and you get to the end of the top of the next page in the document, I wanna add, construction inspections in support of the purposes of approved site plan review projects shall be done by an agent of the board and paid by an applicant, by the applicant.
That wasn't my point, John.
I understand.
Okay.
If, if, and, and so you're, you're right, I missed it, if said inspections find that work is not being done in conformance with the approved, approved plans, the board may suspend the permit until the work in question is repaired. I picked that up, by the way, this language I picked up from two or three, uh, local documents.
This is John Hasbro.
But you're right, John.
I, I do agree with what you just said, except I don't think it applied to what I was saying.
It doesn't apply, it doesn't apply, you're right, so we do need to adjust the, that we get this from our own, uh, engineer.
Yeah. Or our own cost estimator.
Also.
The engineers typically are not cost estimators.
Okay.
Some are, some have construction background, most do not. And, uh, I don't think we should be spelling out who, what kinda person it is, just if we just say what they do.
Okay.
Professional construction cost estimator, and they exist, they're, you know.
Oh, yeah, we use them all the time.
Pardon?
We use them all the time.
Oh, yeah, Fogarty is one of the big names, but there's a whole bunch of them in town, and there are, there are some out in the Tully's.
Okay.
I did it myself for a few years, but it's been a long time.
That is consistent with what was done in the solar bylaw, the surety protection.
Yes, I know, yeah, right, right, right. So that's all really I have, this last one that I have here is, um, I'm not sure about this, but I, a number of the documents had the submission requirements and procedures integrated into the bylaw. I thought about that, I looked at the procedures, they're, they're, they're very good, they're very detailed, they're, they're excellently drafted, but it doesn't give you the flexibility of making adjustments to them without having to change the entire bylaw. But, so I'm just putting it out, how anyone else might feel about that, 'cause I don't.
Well, I'm quite happy the way it is now, that we have a separate, separate submission and procedure and technical requirements kinda thing.
Usually I don't like it, 'cause I like to have everything in a document, but I can see, I can see some real problems with that, what do you think, David?
Yeah, I know, but. The procedural and sort of political reason for that often is the fact that if you have a set of rules and regulations, we can change and temper and tweak those as necessary with our own public hearing, but we don't have to go to town meeting. Sure. But if you put those into the bylaw, and you suddenly discover that, um, got, right?
Right, 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 I understand. So I'm thinking, what's your sense of it, Martha?
Um, in theory, I agree with you, I kind of like to have it all in one place, but I, I, I do think that having the ability to make changes without going through town meeting is probably.
Yeah, I do too.
Yeah.
I do too, okay, so then I'm okay with leaving that the way it is, so, that's me. You wanna go?
I, someone else can talk first.
Oh, okay. You'll go, well, well, no, let, let's start with Martha.
Oh, me, okay. Um, let's see, the first one I had was same as yours, um, adding multifamily and mixed use to the applicability triggers. I think that if we keep the other ones that we have, um, the way a couple of them are worded, um, particularly regarding impervious surface and that kinda stuff is not very clear, I think they should be clarified.
Well, you wanna, um, you mean when you go through A through F?
Um, yes, in particular C, um, 'cause that, when I read it, it seems a little ambiguous. And then E, I think that, um, we should add whichever is smaller, the development of a ten thousand square feet, or more than fifteen percent of the lot area, whichever is smaller or larger, depending which way you wanna go. And then we do have a ground mounted solar, which has been added in here.
Hold on, did you, by any, are you just reading off your notes?
I'm reading off my notes, I didn't have a chance to actually write it out, and I can do that.
Okay.
And the reason I feel that C is ambiguous is that we really got into that discussion during the solar, Scotland Road solar thing, um, you know, whether, whether this actually was more than five thousand square feet or more.
So, so what do you have in mind, though?
I don't have any proposed.
I mean, I know exactly what you're trying to get at relative to the solar issue, but I don't know.
Well, I think it's.
How do you solve that?
How you solve it is you define disturbance.
Pretty simple.
That it's not just, not just disturbance of, of digging holes in the ground.
Well, I mean, okay, yeah, but, but what you define better is, is what you see as change, right?
Right.
Um, and, and there are, there are some helpful things in other towns.
So, for example, if you were going there, you're just driving holes for the posts for the solar, uh, panels, but you don't scrape the ground underneath it. You would probably wind up, I mean, you're walking on there, but you're not disturbing much more than where the hole is.
If you've actually seen the way they do that, they bring in equipment, and if it's on.
But you could get around it, could you?
I thought the building inspector interpreted as not disturbing my doing.
Ye- yes, I know, and he was wrong, frankly.
There, there have been other.
I don't have any problem with that. The issue is that, that in most cases, that's a stretch.
Okay.
To say that you're, you're, you know.
Well, let, let me, let me just say that, Martha, if you could do some more thinking about that, and come up with something that makes sense.
Okay, um, the next thing, under procedure, um, three B, I think that we should expand the list of boards and departments that we.
Oh, right, 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 right.
That actually get it, I, I, for the, um, um, the playmakers one, I've sent that out to the fire department and the police department, I think they should be added along with historical commission if it's applicable.
So that would increase the number of copies?
That would increase the number of copies as well.
Fire, police, and, um.
Potentially historical.
And historic. Okay.
Um, I think, um, under three F, the appeal period should be reduced from thirty days to twenty days or whatever is consistent with special permits. Thirty days seems excessive to me.
I would leave that up to people who've had the experience, I don't.
And I don't see why, it should be longer than.
Twenty-one for, for, is it twenty or twenty-one for?
I was, I couldn't remember, and I was gonna check, yeah, so it should be, it should be the same.
Zoning. It should be the same, I think.
It's twenty, twenty, is it twenty?
Yeah, it's twenty, I think it's twenty calendar days, for special permits.
Yeah. Yeah, twenty calendar days, yeah.
Then let's do twenty.
Yeah, 'cause it doesn't, you know.
Um, under decision criteria, we have, um, item D, it says the site plan is consistent with the master plan, and that seems kind of far-reaching, in what way should it be consistent with the master plan? Or should we, is that too broad to really, uh, address as part of, so I'm kind of flagging that, I don't have a suggestion for it.
Well, if it's not consistent with the master plan, should it be allowed by zoning? That question gets big, doesn't it?
It does, it.
I mean, given the zoning is supposed to be something that it, it's a.
When you all finished the new master plan back in oh-five or oh-six, was there any attempt to coordinate the zoning code to the master plan? Did you come up with a new land use plan?
I think that's what we've been doing since then, is kind of going through the zoning.
That's what I thought, going, yeah.
Right, yeah.
Right.
Right, yeah, our land use review, which happened during the master plan process, indicated very clearly that things like the OSRD needed revision, the, the P I O D needs review, I mean, the whole group of stuff, yeah.
I don't mind having language in there saying it should be consistent with the master plan.
I think maybe consistent is a bit, uh, we could spell that out a little better.
Yeah, that's what I.
In other words, reference the master plan, but do it in a way which is a, a little clearer as to how you apply the master plan.
Okay, so let's just say that that's something that the folks who are gonna work on this in detail will try to come up with it, if we all agree that that makes sense, I.
Um, and the next, under G, we, we note that all variances of special permits required from the Board of Appeals have been granted, but there's no mention under the criteria about, um, CONCOM approval. So I was wondering whether we wanted to add that as well. CONCOM gets mentioned in five below, saying that if they have any conditions which are inconsistent with the plan approval, the plan might need to be revised.
Well, is it, is it, I, I'd never thought it was one of these linear things, I mean, we don't usually require it, do we?
No, it, we've put in as a condition of, of approval, approval by the Conservation Commission, so that can happen afterwards.
That, that we say you need to get CONCOM approval.
So maybe that's enough.
I think that's, I mean, I mean, I'd love to.
They have to, no matter whether we say it or not, so.
Yeah, I think that's okay with me.
Um, let's see, under the procedure, application requirements, um, currently we have a flat fee of five hundred dollars, and I guess one of my questions would be if we end up going to some sort of a tiered review or an administrative review versus public hearing, whether we might wanna take another look at the fee structure for that, so that's just a flag for something to think about.
Okay.
Um, under the application requirements, we've got some conflicting language between the bylaw and the. Um, under the application requirements, we've got some conflicting language between the bylaw and the requirements about who's responsible for placing the legal ad. Um, so I think we just need to clarify that between the two.
Where's, where's that? Were you in the, in the submission requirements?
In the submission requirements.
Like on page three or something like that? Four? Where are you? Yeah, it's not spelled out.
Um, on page two of the submission requirements, um, C.
Oh, I got it, I got it.
And I think.
Okay, so that needs to be clarified?
Yeah, in the body of the bylaw, it says the planning, you know, the planning board will be responsible for placing the ad. Um, so we just need to, to clarify.
Okay.
Get rid of the inconsistency. Um, copies, I think we will need more than ten, since we're increasing the number of departments that get review. Um, the requirement for the abutters list here, it says a butter.
Well, let's, hold on for a second. The one we just got, we got no copies of that, right? The one that we just got for ninety-seven.
Right, Martha gets one copy.
Martha gets one copy?
I asked Tom for three more, one of which I've given to John, so I have two additional copies.
Okay, so should, do you wanna ask for fifteen? Do you wanna ask for fifteen?
Yeah, fif- yeah, fifteen or something.
Each of us, that was one of my things. Can each of us get a copy of the plan?
Yeah, I think, I think everybody should.
Okay, let's go there.
Okay.
Yeah, yeah.
But then Georgetown asked for sixteen, when I was looking at that, cause that was one of my comments, is each board member and then each department, so I think that's.
Yeah, whatever, whatever it comes out to be, okay?
Whatever it comes out to be.
Oh, oh, we're gonna need one for our alternate also?
Oh, George, absolutely needs one.
Absolutely, because, yes.
As long as an alternate is around.
And, uh, this is just a small thing, the, the certified listed property owners within three hundred feet of the property, for special permits, it's actually a butter to a butter within three hundred feet, so I'm thinking again, we should probably make the language consistent.
In subdivision, when we were redoing the subdivision, what I got from Kerry was, I can't remember the language, but there is a definition, a legal definition of who's in a butter.
Right, uh, under, well, under special permits, uh, in most general law, it's a butter to a butter within three hundred feet.
Is that different? Okay.
So that's not people across the street, then?
Uh, plus people across the street, plus people in neighboring towns if they fall within that.
So, a, a person across the street is considered a butter, you're saying?
Yeah.
Right, directly across the street, right, as well as neighboring towns and communities, yeah.
Yeah.
I'd never know that. Directly across the street.
Yeah.
Yep.
Okay.
Um, we need, in, in, in the decision, we need to have some enforcement language, um, which we really don't have right now. You know, we've got the things that may be in the stormwater management plan or the erosion control plan, but we need, I think, a little bit more to help defray any issues.
So you're referencing not so much anything that's in the bylaw, but simply the way that the decision is, is finally written?
Right. Well, and we should have something in the bylaw that will.
That says that.
Give the decision some teeth.
Yeah.
I had the same comment, but mine was more after the permit was granted for that duration of that period. One, are you talking about the same period?
I'm talking, yeah, yeah, during construction, essentially.
Right, okay.
Um, and that also goes into having more, we need to be, spell out more in the bylaw, the conditions that need to be in place both during and after construction, so it's all ties together.
So is that in the performance guarantee first?
Hmm, no, not necessarily.
Isn't that what the performance guarantee is addressing?
Well, the, the performance guarantee is addressing what happens if they default, essentially.
Well, it is, but it also addresses the work on the site.
But if the town needs to go in and rectify it. I would see it as a separate item from the performance guarantee. They're related, but not.
So you think you would need a new, a new item?
I would think that we need a new item that we can then reference in, in the decision that gets written. So there are conditions clearly spelled out in the decision for the applicant, so that it's very clear to him that he shouldn't be putting, you know.
I agree with her.
Doing.
I do too. I just question where it should go. So spell it out on, with, with a new.
With a new.
New heading.
A new heading.
Which would be called?
Teeth.
And that's not criteria for decision, but it's.
Well, it's, it's not criteria, it's like conditions, um, and it's something that really would get written into the decision, but I think there's something that, that should be in the bylaw that then the decision can be based on, and the conditions could be different for every project, so it can't be too.
Oh, no, it, it should be different. Well.
But it's.
So you're saying, I don't know if I'm falling conversation. You're saying within, where, in this document, it would go, or?
Are you? Right. And so maybe it's before the performance guarantee and after the condition of approval, and then you have something in there that says, well, here's the way the decisions are written.
Something, I'm not sure, I'm not sure exactly how it would.
And I didn't, I know, I, it may be that these documents you handed out have, have something like that, but I didn't remember seeing.
Yeah, I.
You mean the, the rules and regs, or?
No, the, the.
All the ones from other communities.
The eight, the eight documents that.
Oh, okay.
Well, where would the inspection information go that was pointed out before?
Well, I was gonna put that, I was putting that after, in the performance guarantee.
Yeah, and I, and I think that would be, I think that might be a separate item, just as it is in our rules and regulations, um, because I had that also, that was my last item, is putting something in for inspections again. I think if we had had inspections built into the decision.
Sure.
For this, it wouldn't have gotten to the point that it did.
So, I like Salisbury's conditions. They, you know, they had um, controls on the location and type of access to the site, donation of land, all that, all those kind of conditions that we, that we could control. So more, giving us a little bit more teeth in it than ours has, cause ours really has none.
Right. Right, exactly. Right, ours has none. Except by reference to some of the documents that they submitted.
Right. I don't know if you wanna.
I've got, I think I've got it here. Salisbury, Salisbury, you said?
Salisbury, yeah.
So, that was my list.
Okay. John?
Yeah, okay. Uh, some of them we've taken care of already. First one would be under the parking, um, the number of parking spaces that are, are, oh, where am I? I'm sorry.
The applicability?
Okay, uh, one of the triggers for site plan review is parking area containing ten or more parking spaces. If you compare the twenty-five hundred square feet, you'll find that, that there's only six required for that. So maybe, maybe we should be saying instead of ten, six or more parking spaces, just to keep the arithmetic consistent.
Oh. Uh, great. I don't know.
You go, pardon?
I, I don't know. David, would, you wrote this at ten, do you know why you did that?
Um, okay, I honestly don't, probably at this point. I, I think actually we considered the number separately.
Number of what?
We considered the number as a separate issue, not related.
Not tied in with the building square footage, yeah.
Yeah, right. Okay, and, and I think that, um, we were looking at a situation where parking spaces were the issue rather than necessarily a building.
Right. A use that, that required a lot of parking but didn't necessarily require a big building.
Well, particularly, let's say, a use which changed and therefore the requirements for parking changed.
Okay.
Well, that's exactly what's happened at, at sixty-seven, sixty-nine, no report.
Yeah.
Right. Yeah. And they're adding like.
Sure.
Twelve parking spaces, aren't they?
Yeah.
Right.
Right, they're ending up with thirteen.
Wouldn't a smaller number of parking spaces be better?
Well, it would, actually, yeah.
Yeah. I was just suggesting six because it ties in with the square footage.
Right. Oh, that's, you know.
It could be five or seven, I don't care.
As I remember, the discussions had sort of tended to push the number up, like, well, if somebody just wants five, why do we have to, you know? Because I think I recently had it at five.
Did you? Yeah.
Yeah. And certainly I do.
Okay, so you're gonna recommend six, so we'll just put that in for the time being and we'll see if that flies.
On A five, one, just as an aside, all we have is a section A, there is no section B or C, which makes one wonder if we shouldn't re, re-annotate.
I think that's because it, that's A under special regulations, is a B is a different type of one.
A five, oh, A.
Right, there could, there could, there could be a B under special regulations. This is, this is the way General Code does it, so.
Oh, I see. Okay, I gotcha. I understand, okay. There could be a B that is not site plan review.
There could be a B, right.
Bingo, all right, good, good answer. A five says, one of the conditions is.
This is in your conditions of approval?
Yeah.
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 Well, the con.
Beginning with site plan approval may be made.
Yeah. No building permit may be issued unless and until the applicant has complied with the provisions relating to site plan review under this article and the conditions modifications restricted, restrictions contained in the decision. Now, I'm not sure what that means. One reading says, he's gotta do all his dirt work, all his drainage, all his utilities, before he gets to build a building, which I would suggest is not practical. I think there should be something like this that keeps the incentive to do as much of this stuff as possible. But there are some things you don't want to do before the building is built, namely the septic system. Because sure in hell, that's gonna get messed up during the construction of the building, so, I mean, I've always told people to build a septic system last.
I just wanna make sure I understand.
Well, I, I don't thoroughly understand it myself. I'm not sure I'm reading it correctly.
This is beginning, uh, so if we start with the sentence before it, any order of conditions from the Conservation Commission which imposes conditions inconsistent with site plan approval shall require revision of the site plan.
That makes sense.
Then you say, a request for such revision, which reverts back to the Conservation Commission, must be submitted to the planning board for any construction project or a change in use that requires site plan review, no building permit, so I'm wondering if that's referencing the CONCOM's action.
Uh.
Cause it's, it's still part of the paragraph, there's no new paragraph, there's no break.
Yeah, yeah, okay, let me comment on that. I was just looking at this. Some, for some reason, and I, my memory tells me that this got combined into a single paragraph because there was thought it was conditions of approval. We also, at the time when we did site plan review, were struggling with a very authoritarian editor at General Code who tended to tell us how to write our bylaws. And I think originally I had proposed that five should have perhaps eve- even three sections.
We could, I can see that.
Yeah, I, I.
And I would.
I, I agree. It looks to me like this is.
Yeah, it was.
Compacted, compacted.
Yeah, I, I really think so.
Well, with that, then I would deem this the responsibility of the subcommittee to figure that one out.
I would say so, yeah. I mean, that's probably a subcommittee action.
But that doesn't really address your question.
Well.
But it may, it may, because it's, when you take it out of, out of the paragraph thing, you will have to rewrite it.
You could just rewrite it, so. Yeah, you'll have to rewrite it, and it can be written in such a way, I think, that makes sense.
This.
Yeah. Cause this doesn't make sense the way I'm reading it.
Mm-hmm.
Okay, um, under A six.
Still didn't understand it. So.
Oh, yeah, surety should also be available to restore a site to a reasonably viable condition if the project is abandoned midstream. I don't think it says that right now in so many words. It says, it implies for completing the project, but not what you do with the project. Let's say Angelo has, having a bad year and his bank pulls the loan. Now he's, he's not gonna, clearly not gonna finish it. So, wha- at that point, what do you do with the surety? You're not gonna finish it, you're gonna, you're gonna regrade everything he's done and hopefully plant some trees that will stay growing and.
No, I think, isn't that referenced anyway by the board may also require by a super majority of the full board that amount be included for land restoration, not having to do with construction improvements?
Right.
Okay, where is that sent?
It's on the next page.
That's.
It's on the same.
It's on the same page, and it starts the board from the line from the bottom.
Key six. Oh, yeah.
And maybe it could be phrased a little.
Is that on six?
Yes, on six.
Yeah.
The board may.
Here it is.
The board may also request it.
It's talking about where you have to restore something, cause it's, you can't finish it.
Yeah, exactly, yeah.
But I think what John is suggesting clarifies it.
I, I think that needs to be worked on. I think that needs a little work.
Okay.
All right. I mentioned the applicant's engineer. Did we say the construction inspection will be paid for by the applicant? I don't think so. I think we talked about saying.
I got it in this one.
You said that, that it should be, yeah.
Yeah.
Require a pre-submission review, we're suggesting it. We probably should just flat require it, and we had talked about some sort of a, uh, Portsmouth does is get all the te-, get the whole team together, the whole development team in town hall.
Absolutely agree.
And, uh, have one meeting.
Yep.
Um, again, that language could be put together by the subcommittee.
So let's, do you have this written out, John?
Yeah.
While you're, okay.
Yeah. I don't, I did not make copies, I ran out of day, sorry. Shouldn't we revise the rules and regulations for the same public hearing? If we're gonna revise these, as I believe we have to for a number of reasons, should we try to get it in the same public hearing so everything ties together?
What are we revising?
I'm talking the site plan review submission requirements. These are the rules and regs that go with the bylaw.
Yeah. Right.
It would seem like a good target would be to do them both at the same meeting.
Oh, I, I think that makes sense.
Mm-hmm.
But then only the bylaw goes on to town meeting.
Oh, I understand that, yeah, but you can have a bylaw and a rules and regulations in the same hearing, I think, right?
Oh, sure, yeah. The only issue there is that you don't want to do very specific stuff to the rules and regulations that might not, in other words, the bylaw fails, or if the bylaw gets changed in a major way, you don't wanna have a set of rules and regulations which are so closely tied that you have to redo them. But I think it's okay.
Yeah. Yeah.
I agree.
Okay. The thresholds, I kicked this around before, and I don't know what good thresholds are. I think David's suggestion of at least two levels or three levels, if the first one is you don't have to do anything, just do it. The second level being the normal stuff we do, and the third level being another little river project.
So we're talking about the tier review process?
The tier review, the tier process, the tier philosophy.
Yeah.
Um, I don't know what to, where to go with that. I read the, the MEPA rules and regulations again, and there are so many things in MEPA that really don't make sense to use that as a, as a criterion, even with scaled down, scaled down thresholds. Um, but we definitely need some thresholds for that. Uh, endangered species is maybe a reason. A variance for chapter one thirty-one is definitely, I would say, a reason, if you're gonna.
What chapter is that? I'm not familiar.
I'm sorry, the Wetlands Act. If they get a variance, which they're not gonna get here, that's a variance from DEP, that is a big project. Because they don't give them out lightly. It's gonna be a, a public utility kind of thing, or a major factory or something, some big deal. Um, a transportation project, a bridge. Uh, I mean, we don't have that many bridges, so it's, that's probably not too likely. Uh, rail work, air, and airport, a major upgrade of the airport at Plum Island. Again, I'm not sure where to go with that, but I think we should go somewhere. Uh, under parking and zoning, uh, yeah, this is a minor point. I think that the parking requirements refer to the zoning parking requirements, and I believe they're saying that for, um, for truck docks, for, for industrial places, I can't lay my hand on it right now, but they're basically saying a thirty foot long, uh, forty foot long truck parking space. Well, Christ, they make trailers today that are fifty-five feet long. Well, Christ, they make trailers today that are fifty-five feet long. I think you want something more like the sixty-five or seventy-five feet of truck dock space. Uh, if we're gonna, if we're gonna dictate that. Uh, dictating that for, let's say, a truck, a loading dock for somebody like Angelo's building, doesn't make sense. Although that could be conceivably converted at a later date, in some years, to an industrial facility. There's no reason why that, couldn't be a factory that makes widgets. But I don't think it would be fair for the first guy to have to put in an enormous truck dock when he doesn't need one. And Angelo doesn't need one.
No, I guess my concern about what seemed to be happening there was that the vehicle loading on the site was not reflecting the plan, or vice versa.
Well, that's, that's quite true, but I think that's another issue.
Yeah, right.
That's another issue.
But it's something.
This doesn't relate to what he's doing, I just used him as an example of. I think that, what we say here in zoning for truck docks is not adequate.
Right.
However, for site plan review, I don't think we should be forcing people to do truck docks if they don't need a truck dock.
Right.
No. So, that's one of those gray areas that ought to be negotiated, that's all I got.
Okay.
Um, I'll just read off the ones that weren't mentioned. On number seven, the duration of the project. I like it to be shorter, it's two Ds right now, where they have to start construction. Um, some of them are less than that in the examples we looked, I'd like the committee to look, the subcommittee to look into that. And when Martha mentioned about teeth, I also had something in there, but I'm not quite sure what, I know we talked about having potentially inspections during construction. But, so we have an expansion, and we go out there and they're not doing what they're supposed to do, what exactly are we gonna do to guide them in the right direction? Has anybody seen any examples? And then, the last comment was more on, um, not so much for the bylaw, but I would like, I would like the board to go in the future and do something like the handout that George shows an example of. George, what community was that, that nice example you showed, was it Burlington or somebod-?
Uh, the, the rules, what you follow?
Yeah, like the nice little handout.
That was Reading.
Reading, Reading, I liked that, too.
That's Reading, yes.
And that's what I had.
Let me, I wanna, a question on clarification between your first point of the two years, which is the time of the approval of the site plan approval. And then, just above it, in item six, it says, the town may, make sure I read this right, may use the secured funds for their stated purpose in the event that the applicant does not complete all improvements in a manner satisfactory to the board within two years from the date of approval. So, the, so the surety is tied to a two-year construction timetable. And if they go beyond the two years, then they're out of compliance, but yet, so. So, that must, so I'm, I'm trying to think of the overlap here, because then the site plan approval, they still have two years to start the project, that's correct?
That's to start.
But then, once they start the project, then they have two years to complete it. Is that what everybody, do you interpret it that way, or am I misreading it?
I think they have two years to begin it.
There's something wrong with that picture.
To begin.
Right, but then, but then up here, it says they have two years to complete it.
Oh, really?
The town may use the secured funds for their stated purpose in the event, this is for the, the, the surety that we take. In the event that the applicant does not complete all impro- all improvements in a manner satisfactory to the board within two years from the date of approval.
Yeah. It's a conflict.
The final date of the last extension of such approval, okay.
So.
There is a conflict.
So, I think that means, I think that means that, no, it may not be, as I read it through. You've got two years to start your project. Once you start your project, that's when the surety really takes over, and then you've got two years to complete.
Two years from there. So, it's like four years total?
So, it could be, it could be four years total.
Yeah.
From start to, from the time we approve it to the time it's completed.
I'm not sure, I'm not sure, if you, if you keep reading on seven. Says, site plan approval for a project shall become void two years from the date of issue, um, unless any construction work um, contemplated thereby shall have commenced and proceeded in good faith continuously to completion, except for good cause.
Right, so, but hypothetically, I get the approval to move forward. And here's the best of all sorts, I, I go out tomorrow and I start.
Right.
It's two years. Everything is two years, the surety is two years, and, and that, that's how long I've got to get the job done. However, if I take two years to start construction, which he has the right to do.
Right.
I'm not, I'm actually not reading it that way.
Could we clarify the language when you go ahead and then we're just.
Yeah, that, yeah, we've got three opinions, and that clearly says we gotta clarify it.
Anyway. So, both of these need, because these are really important issues.
They are, they are very important.
Okay. That was only coming ahead on this.
So, yeah, the duration for the project. And did, does anybody know what we're gonna suggest, possibly for the teeth, uh, in order to push them to, to do what they're supposed to, if they get out of line, or?
Well, we do have this thing that I'd suggested about construction inspections.
Yeah, but we talked about inspections, but okay, say the inspection, we go out there, like Doug and John went out there and there was an issue on this one, well, yeah, okay, so.
Alright.
So, what, yeah, so.
So, this, this says, if said inspections find that work is not being done in conformance with the approved plans, the board may suspend the permit.
So, but realistically, are you going to just take it away?
And this is ta- this is taken from Georgetown, and I think, Geor- this is taken from Georgetown, that's what they suggest.
Well, you can say you take it down until.
That's actually not a bad thing to happen.
Until the work is, and, until the work in question.
If you've waited for two years, you may never get to it.
Until the work in question is completed, and then your surety takes over, and then you get the money and you can complete the job. I mean, that, that's then tied to the surety that's been put into place.
Well, the, the next question is, do we want to complete, why would we want to complete the job? We want to complete a subdivision because we've already started a road system, et cetera, et cetera. This is a private lot that, if the guy's not able to finish, you've probably got a bank that has a vital interest in the whole thing.
They'll be first in line. They'll be first in line.
Yeah, and they're gonna want to see something happen, and they would be definitely an ally. And I would think completing the project may not be what the bank wants to do. Maybe the bank would just as soon cut their losses, rather than complete something they may have trouble peddling. They own it now, now they've gotta sell it, they don't like to own.
But you, you, you're right, but I think in your, in your analysis, you just jumped forward from a project moving slowly to going to bankruptcy.
Right. Or, or maybe just being foreclosed, not necessarily even bankruptcy, just foreclosure on that loan, or, or a bank just pulls the pin. And says, no, I, we've thought things over, you're out of luck. And banks do that.
I think the subcommittee can go over this.
Yep, thank you.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Okay, um.
You hit heavy, almost everything, I wanted more plans, um, in the, um, for A through H. I didn't know if we could add more things like lighting and landscaping and all that.
Oh, yeah.
Or if that's just.
Shielding.
Yeah, all of that.
Yes.
Make it, um, like materials for review, which is what Amesbury has, and they have like ten.
What do you, what do you, just add additional criteria?
Yes.
Traffic considerations, lighting, shielding, lighting.
Right.
Noise.
I mean, this is very vague here, I mean, there's not, I, I guess you can go to the, it says site plan consistent with the master plan, but then there's nothing about lighting, there's nothing about landscaping, there's nothing about traffic control.
No, the, you're right, the two really definitive ones are particularly Newburyport.
Right.
Um, and their development and performance standards are really got deep.
Yeah, Amesbury, it's just called materials for review that we wanna see, traffic generation, building facades and floor plans, signs, open space, lighting.
Yeah, yeah. Yeah.
Lighting's a big one.
Lighting's a very big one, and we have nothing on lighting.
Yep. Yeah.
No, I thought that we had something in here, that was why we had site plan review, I thought was for.
Well, you do have this one catch-all.
Which is?
Which says, the proposed building scale, design, and character of the site development plan is consistent with the surrounding neighborhood. Believe me, believe me, you can go to the bank with that one.
Yes.
It gives you enormous ability to negotiate with the developer. I don't like anything that you've got on there, I want new lighting, I want new landscaping, I want all this stuff, because it's not in conformance of what that neighborhood looks like.
Well, I still think it should be spelled out, in addition to the broadness of that, I think we ought to be. What's the harm in?
Clarifying it.
In, in, in defining those things that we are, of which we have the most concern.
Well, I don't wanna be too, um.
Yeah, I see what you mean, that, yeah, you don't wanna be too specific. Includes, but is not limited to.
Yeah, and, and also, but, yeah, I, it's.
That language works just fine in most places.
Not the one for the subcommittee.
Yeah, Sean, the one point on that is you might be considered under some circumstances of being arbitrary. One person may be treated one way, somebody else may be treated the other, on a similar project. So, it's nice to have some criteria, with additional criteria imposed by the board depending on the nature of the project.
You can't really be making up the rules in the public hearing, you know, there's gotta be something more than.
There was one other thing that I read from Salisbury, that, um, condition of approval, that the planning board gives a, a letter saying that we agree with this, uh, that everything's been done that we said has to be done. And you have to have that before you can get your building and, uh, your occupancy permit.
Don't we have that now?
Do we have that?
We've got it now, I didn't particularly care for that language, though.
I thought there was something about occupancy permit.
Well, there's something in there about occupancy permit, but there's nothing.
It is, yeah. Yeah, it is, I, I don't like the language personally.
There's nothing saying, Linda, are you saying that, that there's some sort of a sign-off from the planning board, saying that all criteria, we don't have anything?
Yes. Right.
No, but that's, that's, I don't see any wrong, anything wrong with that. I, I.
I know, if, all towns usually have different, but with a site plan review, maybe you should have the planning board.
Yeah. I think that's a good point, I was misunderstanding you.
Salisbury has.
Have a sign-off on it.
That's the occupancy permit, not a building permit, yeah.
Right, occupancy.
Yeah, I think that's very good.
Salisbury has what they call a completion.
Right. But you can just make it part of the, the occupancy permit, in most towns, the fire department has to sign off, the, the, um.
Well. Yeah, but.
You know, the gas inspector has to sign off, the electrical inspector has to sign off, the planning board has to sign off, because you had a special permit.
Right, yeah, so.
You're not gonna get, so that means they failed all the requirements that we've asked them to, to fulfill.
Yeah, so the planning board stays in the game until the very end.
Right, and then when that's done, we're out of it.
Right. See, that's what I think will eventually happen, need to happen with the Route One site. That we will need to stay in before that.
You know, that's a great provision. And, um, you know, in larger towns and cities, there's all sorts of staff around who do those kinds of things, but
Mm-hmm.
we really just don't have that. That, that's, that's a good, really excellent suggestion.
I'm done.
Subcommittee, we volunteer you. George?
Uh, I have some points, one of the questions I wanted to pass around is the performance bond, is that continuing, can, we're gonna continue to be discretionary, or should it be mandatory?
I think it should be mandatory.
I think we've learned it probably should be mandatory.
I like it as mandatory.
Yeah, I, I think.
So, change it from May to will?
Yes.
Shall, yeah, shall is a better word.
So, here's the question. I was laudatory to David for his ability to create a performance bond section that I thought was really quite good. There is no other community that I've seen that requires a performance bond on buildings privately owned. They require Newburyport and others require performance bonds on off-sites.
Mm-hmm.
And on on-sites. But no structures.
Well, I.
I, I'm, I'm just raising that as a, but we have it on the project.
Mm-hmm.
Which I think is good. But I'm just.
That raises a good point, because the real interest of the town is in the, is in the, everything except the building.
Right.
The, other than the fact that we can get more taxes if there's a building there. A nice parking lot, nicely landscaped is worth something, but it's worth a lot more if you've got a building doing things.
Right.
Yeah, that needs.
That ought to be broken out.
That really should be.
Whether it's discretionary or mandatory.
So, how, 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 how do you mean broken out?
Excluding the building?
Well, everybody.
We need to think about whether, well, I.
I, I would reverse, I would refer that to the subcommittee and think it over and.
Yeah, I might be inclined to see what town council thinks about that one, too.
Site plan deals with the site, not with the structure.
Right.
Right. I, I.
I'm not sure we can do it.
I think that, based on my reading of some tea leaves, that might make some sense, I don't know.
There was?
Reading of tea leaves, do you know what I mean?
Yes.
George, you have anything else?
Yeah, I did, it follows up on yours, Kathleen, should the time period for performance go from two years to one? Would the discretion on the board do bring it forward further on a, a month to month, or up to say, two years total?
Do we know what Angelo's financing?
Yeah, have an extension if necessary, as long as it's been substantial before.
Don't, don't keep it as, well, in two years.
Find that out.
Right.
Yeah.
Well, there's a conflict that has to be resolved anyway, between, did he have two years to start this project?
So, we have to, we have to figure that out.
Or does it have to be completed by the local bank?
Yeah, I think he has two years to start it, and then after he starts it, he's got another two years to complete it.
It's not really what it says.
No, we're just gonna correct, we're gonna correct the language.
Anyway, so we need to correct that language.
Have to correct that, but let's take it down to one year with discretion to carry it to a higher number.
Uh, well, I will say this, though, that, I mean, if, depending on the size of a project, it's very easy for a project to take two to three years to build.
But then it gets an extension.
A negotiated extension is acceptable.
Sure.
This one should not be a two to three-year project, though. From the time he starts it, he, he, even with all the ledge he has to shoot.
There's no doubt.
He could certainly get done in a year.
There's no doubt.
Done pretty quickly. Uh, another writer was on enforcement, there's, there was only one of the samples that you sent out, Sean, that included enforcement, I figured out what town it was, and it was pretty vague. And I think enforcement really falls on the building inspector, doesn't it?
Mm-hmm.
We can go out and do inspections and say, we've found this problem, we turn that over to the building inspector. We have no enforcement authority.
No, that's correct, it's the building, it's the building inspector.
But we can still go out and look and smell and see what's going on.
Right. So, where, where, are you suggesting changes where?
Uh, that provision would be a new provision for enforcement. Complete, uh, completely new provision, be along with performance, be along with, uh, bond in that area.
Well, for example, we're enforcing it right now through the ConCom.
Yeah, and the ConCom does have enforcement authority.
They have enforcement authority, too.
Subcommittee.
Right.
Well, the building inspector can refer to the ConCom if necessary, too.
Well, yeah.
Alright, enforcement, I'm not exactly sure what that means, but.
I don't think it's the building inspector's authority until such time as a building or other structure gets started.
Oh, you're right.
He doesn't have a lot to say about drainage or utilities and so forth.
Once, once he gets the building permit.
Yeah.
And he starts, it's the building inspector's responsibility.
And who is it otherwise?
Pardon?
ConCom.
Where the building begins, is it only the ConCom?
And us.
Yeah, well, except it's easier for the ConCom to enforce.
And we have suasion. We may have suasion, I, I think that's an interesting issue that the committee really ought to cover.
Okay, I agree.
Because there are no other authorities in town.
No.
Except unless we send Tracy down.
Well.
Town administrator.
It reflects, I think, a general lack of lines of enforcement. We have lots of bylaws which nobody particularly pays much attention to.
It's nine, ten, and we haven't gone to David yet.
Right. So, are you all, I mean.
I have one more, I have one more. Uh, dealing with the solar power array being mounted on stilts, so to speak, there was not much ground disturbance, but in other areas of the bylaw, we talk about, uh, floor area, twenty-five hundred square feet or more. Well, there was a thing that went up, had twenty, fifteen acres. Now, something has to be considered about that, even whether it's built above the ground or not, it's still ground cover.
Well, we, didn't we cover that by simply saying that anything solar that requires a permit?
I understand that, but something else may come along.
What's that?
I don't know, something else might come along, this hasn't been invented yet. It's gonna cover a lot of ground area, I don't know.
I think that goes back to David's comment about trying to define what disturbance actually means.
Right.
Yeah, right.
I mean, focusing just on solar was good, but it might have been too focused.
Okay, so, could be.
God, he was in the, getting rid of my coat. By the way, is it, is, I know, is there an extraordinary amount of skunks around these days?
My TV.
Oh, always in the south end of the road, it's loaded.
Oh. I have never, like, smell the one here now.
Yeah.
They're, they're out in the day, daytime in my place.
And I'm afraid to let our dog out.
Yeah, usually they're not coming out.
So, we're sorry about that, but that's what I'm talking about.
Sorry.
So, I'm still not sure what you mean, though, by that, I mean, it, it's just this unforeseen.
There may be, solar power was unforeseen twenty years ago, in the, in the sense that this thing came in to cover fifteen acres. And we had criteria that talked about disturbance of soil, which really didn't affect it very much, unless we could go in and say, each pilein covers so many square feet, or. Unless we could go in and say, each pilein covers so many square feet or one square foot, so we add them all up in this coverage. Uh, I just don't know the best way to handle that. Had, had it been a structure above ground in excess of twenty-five hundred square feet.
Well, it is interesting, the three kind of new uses that did not exist fifteen years ago, I'm sure, are the cell, cellphone towers.
Yeah.
The wind turbines and solar arrays.
Right.
Just, nobody had them, and so towns have had to adjust accordingly.
Mm-hmm.
But maybe that's what you do, George, maybe you just, as these things come along, you figure out what it is.
Yeah, and then you're gonna adjust it each time, you know.
Subcommittee.
Subcommittee, David.
Committee, the subcommittee is gonna be, right, okay, well, yeah. As you might guess, um, I'm a great believer in radical surgery. Um, okay, so I would spell out under applicability, um, I would actually spell out it based on, not limited to commercial, industrial, office, multifamily, mixed use, um, institutional, municipal, fraternal, utility, and recreational.
Fraternal, did you say?
Fraternal. Fraternal, like the moose, if they're still around, okay. In other words, rather than saying a sort of, you know, everything, I think you need to be specific and you need to indicate. And certainly, and I picked up on some of the things, um, despite my disparaging comments about them in the past, that our attorney um, suggested to us, I can't find, okay, um, where are they, well, anyway, um, that essentially we, we, we need to look at things like education and religion that generally are given a sort of carte, yeah, yeah, Mark.
That was, that was Mark's recommendation, yes, yes.
Generally, they give them sort of carte blanche, but you really shouldn't do that. Okay, so that's, that's one thing. Uh, I would, um, encourage, I would divide it into two levels, okay? I would take out the whole business here that, that, basically, what we fell afoul of with the solar array is that we had a change in use, maybe, and then we had to have a second thing to trigger. We shouldn't do that, we should just have one thing that triggers it. Because otherwise you get people playing games, it's like the height of buildings on Plum Island kind of thing. Um, so I would not have the double trigger idea because I think that.
Are we talking of the tier review or what trigger, um?
Well, okay, under applicability, right now there has to be a change of use or.
Whatever the list is, yes.
Right, and then there has to be one of the list, so you've got a double requirement.
Right.
I don't think you should have a double requirement. I think there should be two levels. The first level should have an encouragement, a, a sort of, you know, you really must have a pre-application conference. The second level would mandate the pre-application conference, which would be, I think, what John O'Connell was referring to earlier as being the team, you get the team together to review it.
Yeah.
And that for the, my level two would be mandatory.
Yeah.
You'd have to do that. Um, okay, I've basically got a bunch of triggers which are a little different from what we currently have. Um, and maybe in the view of the hour, I'm not gonna go through the numbers, um.
Right now, we're just going on topic, though, without getting specific, aren't we?
Well, I know, so, so I would have two levels, and they, and one level would be, essentially, it would be administrative review with a planning board written decision. Level two would be a public hearing.
When you say administered review, that means?
I mean that, that, frankly, you know, to make it particular, that, that Martha and Doug
Town departments.
Uh, could essentially present something to us and say, we think this is fine, or we think this has a problem.
So it's internal town hall?
Yes.
And then, okay, I understand.
Yeah. Um, okay, the one, um, thing I would, uh, like to slip in here, and I can hear the screams and yells as I say it, is I would like to include one residential class. And that would be for residences over probably forty-five hundred square feet that were within two hundred feet of a river, pond, ne- national, state, or local designated public amenity or resource.
Um, Linda, how many does that trigger? Homes in Newbury, I mean, that's not that big of a home, is it?
Well.
Is it a big home?
Well, those are the, all the ones that are being built.
Yeah.
Then it would trigger all of the ones on.
All of the McMansions.
Is it just the Newman Road?
All Newman Road.
Is it like, um, Froland Farm?
No, it would be Froland Farm.
Are you talking total square footage or footprint fo- square footage?
Um, I hadn't gotten that far, but I, I, because I was playing around with what the number would be, um, I'm talking, I think, essentially, probably, if it's the lower number I had, it would be footprint, which would be thirty-five hundred.
Yeah.
If it was the higher number, which was more than forty-five, it was more like five thousand, it would be the total.
Thirty-five, that, my house would be triggered.
Not if it's your footprint.
Thirty-two, I'm thirty-two.
Footprint, no.
No, no, not if it's footprint.
I, 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 I don't have two stories, I'm thirty-two.
Well, there's no house, there's very few houses that are thirty-five hundred.
I'm thirty-two.
You're a split.
It's not thirty-five hundred square foot.
And my only have a small one.
Even the one that he's building for the, for the, yeah, that's not thirty-five hundred square.
Well, anyway, you, you see, what, what I'm simply doing is I'm not trying to target big houses. I'm trying to target large residential project, projects which fall into environmentally or culturally or resource sensitive areas.
I see that, I understand that.
Okay.
But wait a minute, is it? So you're not talking about individual houses, you said?
Well, I'm not talking about a kind of house, a big house, I'm talking about a big house on a kind of site because this is site plan review. And I think what happens is that what we're doing and can do is we're ending up essentially, um, using resources in, in ways which are incredibly wasteful with no kind of review of what's happening at all.
Such as?
Well, such a, such as, for example, what is the water supply status on Newman Road? And how is it going to affect the water table?
Wait.
If you're producing houses which have, you know, probably five bathrooms.
Yeah, but you're, have more of an impact with a lot, a lot of houses.
Right.
You got more of impact if you have more small houses than having three big houses on water.
Sure you will. Right.
Yeah.
Well, yeah, but. If you had a traditional, like all those ones that have been built on, uh, Route One A, they all have families, they've got little kids and.
Route One A, where?
Across from, uh, those, those new ones that have been built.
Your house. On the hill, Bull Hill.
Right on the road on the hill.
Three by Old Town Hill?
Yeah.
Oh, you mean, yeah.
But not, not.
They've all got kids, there's three kids, there's, I mean, and it's all within the same amount of square footage, uh, lot size that it would be on one of the, anyway, I don't wanna fight on that, I understand where you're going.
But the big one, the big one that's being built, there could have been four houses there.
That's what we're trying to tell him.
Right, okay, there, there could have been four houses there, but.
So, you know. That's what was approved for there.
Uh, yes, admittedly, and, you know, part of the whole thing there was that, there was, well, I mean, okay, there was Catch Twenty Two involved in that he didn't do the OSRD, if he'd done that, the whole thing might have been different. The trade offs are that, yes, you might, you might consider that you're continuing to stress the water system, but at the same time, if you're actually getting a better total use of the land, you know, it's looking at something holistically instead of.
I don't agree with you as far as the water table, but I do agree with you when it comes to like how, maybe a di- certain distance from a river or a pond. I, I, I do, I can kinda see that point.
Yeah, well.
That's, that's, that.
It's Concom.
They're not, they're not allowed to build within two hundred feet of a river, it's, that's a law.
Right, that's the buffer.
Rivers, the river.
The river is that, the buffer.
River act, yeah.
Right.
So why would we be involved when that's not, they're not allowed to do it anyway?
So I guess the question is, if this was a house that was gonna be built to hu- following the current requirements, what exactly would you be trying to shape or mold on that site?
What, I think simply, the idea of this, and this again is picking up on, on some of Mark's stuff that, that, that sort of he didn't mention, but is in some of the towns that he mentioned, is the whole idea of having a review process that essentially enables a community to, to become involved in its development in a, in an active way. Not to say no, not to say you can't, but to, to, to in fact bring it to a point of suggesting. Because one of the things I said earlier is, um, to Linda, is that, for example, the placement of those particular three houses is horrendous.
See, I think that there's people in town that disagree with you on that.
Of course.
I know, I know many people that really love those houses.
Of course.
So, I mean, it's all.
That's, but that's what community is about, is having a conversation.
But if it's an ANR lot, first of all.
Yeah, but that's hopefully gonna go.
So we're gonna get rid of ANRs?
Yes.
Well, maybe.
Hopefully.
I mean, it's all.
This is new to me.
Well, no, it's, it's the.
It's the land.
Pending, pending land use legislation at the state level, right, right, right.
You mean the state, not, not here.
Oh, ANRs are gonna be out.
It's possible, it's possible.
We, we've been hearing this for years.
Okay, well, anyway, it's interesting, isn't it, that, that it's raised discussion? Okay, I mean, it's, it's probably something that will not survive. Um, uh, I think that, yes, we need to spell out the decision criteria fairly densely and I thought that the Redding thing did it pretty well at a simple level because if you notice what the Redding thing did, does, although it's not the bylaw, it's a sort of handbook. Um, it sets out the considerations that site plan review uses and then it sets out what the board that does it actually looks for, and these are pretty sort of congruent. That, which is that, I don't know whether you saw this, but the one with the, um, the, and I think that we should think about the fact that our, um, site plan review probably needs a handbook or similar. In other words, it needs a sheet which basically says, this is the goal, in pretty simple language.
Mm-hmm.
Because I think if you read this, you're not entirely, I mean, the, the, the purpose here is so broad that it could be written for anything. Um, okay, uh, I think most of the other things that you have raised are things that I had thought about in one way or another. The two things that I think we need to add are, well, actually, three. Uh, picking up on a comment which got made earlier about lighting and picking up a comment that Mark made about using beefy, as he puts it, um, bylaws to be that which drive your site plan review. In other words, the standards that you use in site plan review come from good other bylaws that you have. That you have lighting bylaws, we don't have anything on our bylaws that, to do with lighting. The other thing is that we need something in site plan review about earth removal because our current earth removal bylaw is designed for somebody who wants to operate essentially a commercial gravel pit or similar um, and has nothing to do with what is the common practice, which is to strip a site, sell the topsoil, and then come and put, you know, unmentionable stuff.
Take eight inches off and put two inches back, yeah.
Yeah, exactly, put three back. Um, and the other thing is that we do need something that says that the only appeal is, um, to the courts as stated in forty-eight, paragraph seventeen. That basically, if you wanna appeal a decision, you go to land court, you don't go to ZBA or some.
Either, either land court or superior court.
Yeah, yeah, but it, you know, that it's, it's not.
I like using the courts.
Yep, I agree.
Okay, that's it, I think, 'cause, you know, a lot of other people did a lot of stuff. There are some other things, um, that, uh, you know, will come up in the small group.
Okay. Who is interested in being on the subcommittee? We have a town planner.
Don't all speak at once.
I know.
We have Linda.
Oh, can't.
Don't want him.
We have.
Sean.
David.
All right, who, so how many people do we need?
Three.
Three, and right now we have.
One.
One.
All right, I, we'll do it, how about how frequently are there going to be a meeting? And for how long?
Well, I think, um, right. I don't know, it's up to you guys. Um.
During the day.
During the day.
As of immediately.
Um, you know, maybe you could get this done in a period of, uh, two months? If you met, three or four times.
I can do it during the day, but I can't guarantee the days that I can do it, because my schedule changes constantly.
I don't think it needs to be necessarily on a set schedule.
I have grad school.
What you need to do is assemble everything that's been put up and start to go through and analyze it. You know, see where you've got the duplicates and come up with a list of potential changes and then with those, well, then you have to think them through, and if you're gonna disregard some things, you have to have the reason why you're disregarding them. And then do a draft. Now, easier said than done, but I think that's at least three or four meetings.
Can't do more than an hour at a time.
Oh, I like that.
Well, that makes it efficient.
I, because I don't wanna sit there for two hours.
I can't, I just.
All right, so.
I think we've got a subcommittee here and, and, um.
The girls?
The girls.
The girls.
The girls.
The girls.
Well, what I will volunteer to do is to read and edit. Okay, in other words, rather than, than sitting and, and discussing and generating because the problem with this is that I did the first one and now I really want it to go in a direction I don't think any of you were ready for, and I don't mean that critically, I mean that, that's a judgment call. But I'm certainly willing to look at stuff and say, gee, I, do you wanna understand this, you know?
Right.
This kind of thing, if that's helpful.
And, and I, my only concern is, again, um, I guess it's a combination of, um, the answer to my question of last week, which was, how many of these have we done? And the answer was two.
How many what?
Site plan reviews.
Revisions.
Right.
With the three in the works.
You know, well, with the third, and then I look at the size of all of those and what they were like, and I go, oh, that's interesting. Then realizing that the really big problems that we're gonna have will be solved in a different way. And then looking at the reality of what we're up against in getting approvals, that's all I, that, that drove a lot of my thinking, that's all. So, but I think you got a lot of great ideas, and I think that we need to explore them and then come back as a group in, in two months, let's say. Let's, our target is that the, this work of the s- subcommittee should be done in two months and we'll meet again in.
First meeting in October.
No, in November.
I mean, it's November, right.
First, first meeting in November with a report from the subcommittee to the whole total board.
How about the middle of November?
Yeah, I was gonna say.
All right, you know what?
That's true.
The one before Thanksgiving, whatever that one is. Okay?
And as you know, I'm always willing to, uh, review and comment.
Good. So if that's okay with everybody, that's what we're gonna do, I have all my notes here that might be helpful, and I'll give them to you, Martha, which I took from everybody's, but, so if everyone will submit their things to, oh, I can't do that. This is on my document.
Put it in your zoning book.
Yeah, I'll give it to you.
Oh, no, no, why don't I copy it?
Just go copy it.
Yeah, I'll copy it at the end of the meeting.
But you can do it, give it back to me, it's all right.
Okay.
But then, David, you've got stuff that you can give to it.
Not in any form right now.
But you can send it in.
Yeah, yeah.
That was part of your homework, David.
It was, David. All right, moving on, Caldwell Farm update. What's the update? I, I, I got back to our friend. And as we would all expect, I've heard nothing from him. But I simply said, well, I understand you're saying that your board wants to meet with myself and, and Martha, but our board wants to meet with you. So that was sent to him and his compatriot a little while ago. Did you forward your note to, to your contact?
Um, no, because I, I wanted to see whether anything did happen.
No, I mean, I think that it's not inappropriate. You know, he does say he's not coming back until late October.
Mm-hmm.
So why don't we let it sit, and then maybe in early October, Martha, you can give him a call and say, well, you know, I've got all this stuff and wanted to put you on the agenda, and where do you wanna be, something like that. Well, what I didn't, we had several discussions, though, since that meeting about, and I just wanted to clarify. I've not gone back, unfortunately, to look at that easement.
Mm-hmm.
And the size of the easement. And I'm wondering, you, you are, you're just convinced, based on your knowledge of it, that that's not a problem, to put a trail from A to B, east to west, and then to somehow hook up with some kind of trail somewhere on the Ailed and Rude property. All right. Anything else? Anybody want to talk about Caldwell?
No.
And then the stormwater regs? You two?
They've been distributed, and we've requested comments back on the sixteenth.
Okay, good.
So we'll have them before the eighteenth meeting.
Good.
I got one issue on the subdivision things. In talking with Tim, because there's some people you don't expect to get a sensible letter back from because of the, the pressures of the job and that sort of thing. I thought it would be helpful if I sat down with him and went through the things that I thought he would care about.
Right.
And he's welcome to do anything else as well, but anyway, the thing, one of the big things I think he has a concern about would be the road widths. For two reasons. One, they're his roads, and secondly, he's on the Board of Fire Engineers. And he was quite concerned about the, the shrinking. Originally, I had left it alone. David had suggested that we look at, and, you know, anything that shrinks impermeable surface, obviously, I'm in favor of. So I went through the Mass Highway Design Manual and shrunk them back to eighteen, twenty, twenty-two, and so forth. Tim is very concerned about two trucks being able to pass, and to do that, you need twenty-two feet. And I'm, what I'm gonna suggest is that when Martha types it up, she just changes that to twenty-two feet, okay? It's the equivalent of one or two McMansions a year, you know, and, and we don't have a subdivision a year that has a half a mile of road. So while I would prefer less, I think I would prefer be able to put out fires without trucks getting stuck.
Is twenty-two feet from here to that wall?
Pardon me?
Is twenty-two feet from here to that wall?
Oh, no, 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 no. No, that's way over twenty-two.
Probably, what, two-thirds of the way.
Thirty?
These are two-foot squares.
Two foot, two and a half foot squares, aren't they?
No.
No, I think they're two.
Two?
Yeah, most of the way from, from Martha to, to where I am.
Yeah, that's about right.
Two eleven-foot lanes. Your standard lane on the highway is twelve. So this is slightly smaller. Also, in all fairness, the standard road in Newbury is like nineteen or twenty.
I was just gonna say, like, Hay Street, I was just gonna say, Hay Street's probably nineteen.
Hay Street, Elm Street is, is, Orchard Street is twenty. I mean, I've had reason to measure street widths in four locations, and they're all nineteen to twenty feet. However, you know, I do see Tim's point, and I have been involved in fire trucks getting stuck back when years ago when I was on the fire department. Unfortunately, it was during a drill, but during a fire, that's not a pretty sight. So if it's okay with everybody, I would ask, I would suggest we ask Martha to just change those numbers back to the twenty-two. We have one for twenty-four, but Lord knows, we're never gonna have an arterial highway.
Right.
Subject to that.
Well, I mean, I, I really like the narrower roads, but if DPW and fire have a problem with it.
Yeah, I think, I think we, uh, I mean, if, if it came to a real argument, serious argument, they're gonna win, and I saw, I see no point in stirring anything up.
And you think it would?
Pardon me?
You think it might?
Oh, I think if we, well, if we just left it and ignored, what we're gonna get is a bunch of firefighters in here at the public hearing, and.
But aren't we just asking for comments from them? So should they just make a comment? We wanna make the road width twenty-two feet? It should be that simple.
Well, as long as we are willing to make that, I think it would be easier, and we'd probably have a quieter hearing if we just made it twenty-two feet before we put it out. That's how I feel.
Well, we got the verbal comment from Tim, right?
We got a verbal comment from Tim.
Well, he already made the comment.
All right, so, so therefore, no, so therefore, I, I'd propose, let's do it.
Yeah, I'd say.
Okay. Uh, just an, another update on, on this is that Martha and I did have a s- short chat with, um.
Tracy?
All of a sudden, I've, I've lost it. What's?
I do this all the time.
Concom?
Get used to it.
Doug.
Doug.
Doug. About the issue of the Concom taking over responsibility for the stormwater.
When I talked to him, he was all for it.
He's all for it.
No problem at all.
And absolutely no problem at all, and I think that where we left it was that he was gonna go through this process of having it all reviewed, and then seeing what those comments looked like, and then we'd sit down with Tracy and see what Tracy said. So that's where we are on that.
Yeah. I took, I mentioned it to Tracy, and she was, she was quite okay with it. The, to, to change the approval authority requires a town meeting. To change the rules and regulations writing thereof does not, as near as I can see.
Right.
And since there's issues there, I would suggest we just turn that over to the Concom, provided it's okay with Tracy. Clearly, it's gotta be, it's gotta be formalized in some fashion.
Right.
And then explore for the next town meeting, the, you know, a relatively minor change in the, in the bylaw.
Okay. New business? Nada. Board of Selectment did not meet. MVPC?
Will meet in two weeks. And what's on the docket right now is, um, basically some traffic stuff. That's about it.
They are gonna, um, for their next Mayor's and Managers Meeting, they are gonna have a discussion regarding stormwater utilities.
Are they?
And I sent Tracy an email today to see if she's planning on going, and if not, I, I would go in her stead.
When, when is that?
Um, I don't remember. I can, I can let you know.
Yeah, if you would.
Something like ten days' time, something like that.
Yeah, I thought it was, I thought it was actually maybe the eighteenth or something.
Yeah.
Okay.
Give a little more, right.
Are, are they presenting ways that it can be done?
Um, I think there's gonna be a discussion. I think actually, it's a follow, they had Scott Horsley do a presentation at their last, one of the last ones, um, similar to the one that.
We went to, yeah.
We went to, and this is basically a follow-up.
I see.
On that.
Scott Horsley, is it from?
We, we.
I cannot believe that we could ever sell a town water, uh, one in Newbury. I could be dead wrong, but.
Now, if you would like to look at the agenda here.
I don't see that happening.
We have two items to go.
No, we don't. There's nothing from ZBA.
There's not, and do you have anything from?
What's that?
Do you have anything?
I have nothing. We have not met since. You heard our biggest thing tonight.
No, you're free to go.
Just go home.
Okay. Kind of a motion to close the meeting, please.
I make a motion.
Sure.
All those in favor?
Bye.
Aye.